Good evening. Good evening, Commissioner Patrick. Good evening. Thank you all for joining us for our regularly scheduled Dunwoody City Council meeting of August 8th. It is 6:00 PM and I call this meeting to order. Councilwoman Lotenbacher, can you lead us in the invocation and the pledge, please?
Yes. At this meeting, help us to make decisions which keep us faithful to our mission and reflect our values. Give us strength to hold to our purpose, wisdom to guide us, and a keen perception to lead us. And above all, keep us charitable as we deliberate. Please join me in the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands unafraid.
Right?
My pleasure tonight to have five officers that we're going to swear in. And if I have them officers come up, that'll be great. All five of them. Alex, Alex. One, I think, is running a little bit behind, but I want to introduce each of them to you. The first, if y'all would just raise your hand when I introduce you, Ernesto Ernie Green. Ernie has most recently been employed as a coach for CrossFit, both in the U.S. and internationally. He has also worked as an advocate for abuse victims at the refuge in Vidalia, Georgia. And prior, prior to that, he held many positions in the sports coaching and janitorial industries. He's enrolled at Florida Institute of Technology, pursuing a bachelor's degree. He joined our team April 25th and went to the academy. And if I remember correctly, he was the academic star student for the class. We have Terrence Alexander. Terrence joined us from the Georgia Tech Police Department, where he has employed as a police officer since 2020. Previously, he worked as a police officer, school resource officer for the, I hope I say this right, Skokie Police Department in Illinois, and a police officer for Richston Park Police Department, also in Illinois. And he's a U.S. Air Force veteran, holds an associate degree in accounting from Robert Morris College, and a bachelor of arts degree from Governor State University. And he joined our department on June 22nd. We're lucky to have him. Brandon Everett. Brandon joined us from the DeKalb County Police Department, where he was employed as a police officer since 2019. Prior to that, Brandon worked as a police officer for the New York Police Department. And he earned an Associate of Science degree in criminal justice from Nassau Community College. And he joined our team on July 6th. Next is David Stone. David joined us from the Stone Mountain Police Department, where he was employed since 2019. He was promoted from police officer to sergeant in '21. And prior to that, David was a franchise business consultant for Great Wraps. And we're happy to have him here on our team. Then lastly is Taylor Mossman. Taylor joined us from the DeKalb County Police Department also, where he has employed as a police officer since 2019. Prior to that, he worked as a project manager for Dreamworks Restoration Contractor. And we're happy to have him on our team.
And just repeat after me. On my honor, I
On my honor, I, Terrence Alexander
solemnly swear and affirm that
I solemnly swear and affirm that
I will support and defend the Constitution of the United States of America.
I will support and defend the Constitution of the United States of America.
The Constitution of the State of Georgia.
The Constitution of the State of Georgia.
And the Charter and ordinances of the city of Dunwoody, Georgia.
And the Charter and ordinance of the city of Dunwoody, Georgia.
I am not the holder of any unaccounted-for public money
I am not the holder of any unaccounted-for public money
due to the state or any political subdivision or authority thereof.
Due to the state or any political subdivision or authority thereof.
I am not the holder of any office of trust under the government of the United States.
I am not the holder of any office of trust under the government of the United States.
Any other state
Any other state.
or any foreign state which I am
Or any foreign state which I am.
by the laws of the state of Georgia
By the laws of the state of Georgia.
prohibited from holding.
Prohibited from holding.
I am otherwise qualified to hold the office of a peace officer
I am otherwise qualified to hold the office of a peace officer.
according to the constitution and laws of the state of Georgia.
According to the constitution and laws of the state of Georgia.
I will faithfully follow the legal rules, regulations, policies, and procedures of the Dunwoody Police Department and the city of Dunwoody, Georgia.
I will faithfully follow the legal rules, regulations, policies, and procedures of the Dunwoody Police Department and the city of Dunwoody, Georgia.
Congratulations. Welcome to Dunwoody. We are thrilled that you are here. I know I speak for council, sharing our excitement and enthusiasm, and this is your community. They're here tonight. We are so glad that you're joining our team. And so we take a picture or
Group picture here.
group picture. And then I think maybe if you have family members here and they want to come take a picture, we can do that too. Make an office in the middle. Yeah, okay. Get this out of the way. One, two, three. Great. One, two, three. One, two, three. Again, again. If you have family members, have them come up and we'll take pictures. Anybody in the family? Come on, don't be shy. Come on. And we'll do individuals. So y'all want to all step down and then we'll take turns.
That'd work.
So, once again, we are so excited that you're joining us here, and we're very grateful that you chose Dunwoody. And also a big shout out to the entire Dunwoody Police Department for National Night Out Thursday night. It was fantastic. I'm sorry it rained towards the end, but it was a great event. And we are always so incredibly appreciative and grateful for your service. Again, I know I speak for council, and so thank you all. And again, for those of you that are new, welcome.
Mayor, it's my pleasure to ask Sergeant Anwar Silla to come up and talk about our second Dunwoody Police Department Teen Academy. It was, as usual, a great event this year, and I'll let Anwar speak to kind of what's happened. We've got some graduates here. We want to certainly recognize them for participating in the program.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. I just wanted to recognize our second annual teen police academy this year. This year, we had 12 students from Dunwoody and surrounding jurisdictions join us for our annual summer program, which took place July 11th through the 15th of this year. And we had a great time. The students have different opportunities to come out to the police department, get a tour of the police department, interact with the police officers and staff members. They also took field trips to places such as the GBI headquarters, a county jail, 911 Center, and different areas. They also received an opportunity to participate in our simulator, which is a farm simulator, but you also have different options where you can, they could get put through situations that officers get put through as far as making decisions quickly. And so it was a success. Many of the students enjoyed the program, and I'm going to have one of the students just come up and share their experience, and then we'll have the rest of the students come up as well, so that they can be recognized. So Marie Harris is going to come up.
Hi, Mayor and City Council. My experience during the Dunwoody Teen Police Academy was outstanding. The, what I've learned through what the city council, the Dunwoody Police does during their patrol, was I wasn't aware of all of that and what they have to do to protect the city. The field trips are outstanding, but being able to see the inside of a jail and the GBI made me more interested in my major that I want to do in forensics. I recommend it to anyone, your kids, your grandkids, nieces, nephews. I totally recommend it. It's, if you want to go into law enforcement, I recommend it. Okay, yeah, all right.
So we'll call the students up and take a photo, and the mayor has any remarks as well.
So first, a big shout out to Sergeant Seela, who started this in the summer of '21. And now he brought this program to Dunwoody, and it offers an opportunity, not just for those who might be interested in policing, but is a career, but anybody, any young person interested in learning just simply more about public safety. And he arranges an incredible program with field trips to the GBI. I'm going to not get them all right to a jail, 911 Center, and Dunwoody restaurants, who support it with lunches. It's a ton of work, and he works night shift. So, and they start it very early in the morning, and they were very excited. And I know they learned a lot. I visited with them at their graduation. And I'm hoping to the students that some of you will consider law enforcement as a career and will come back home and serve the community where you were raised. So I think it's awesome. And so, pictures, do you want counsel down? Maybe I'll like counsel for this. How do you want us to do this?
Mayor and Council, it's my pleasure to present our officer of the quarter for the second quarter and our employee of the quarter, to be an employee of the quarter for the second quarters. So I'd ask Officer Alex Chung to come forward. It's time now. Just right here would be great. So Alex received the officer of the second quarter. Some of you know, or I'm sure you remember, the double homicide that we had over on PIB. So we had a description of a vehicle, and Alex used our Flock system to track down and identify the relationship between the suspect vehicle and the victim's vehicle, and how they interacted together. He also was able to identify the vehicle and get a tag number for us. The detectives and other officers spread out in the area was able to locate the vehicle. And then subsequently, within about 12 hours, was able to make the first arrest on the case, thanks to Alex's hard work. So I want to thank him for that monumental task of sorting through all of these images to locate the suspect vehicle, and it's another way that we use technology to help us be more efficient and solve crimes. So thank you, Alex. Appreciate it. So our employee of the second quarter is Elizabeth Stell. If you'd come forward, Liz, as we all know her. Liz, this is pretty easy for me, because, you know, Liz is my executive assistant and has been from almost the beginning. She does a fantastic job, but this particular quarter, she was recognized because of all of her project management skills, as she coordinated our 2021 annual award presentation and our year-in-review slideshow. She spends a lot of countless hours putting that together every year. Although COVID, ongoing COVID restrictions delayed our in-person presentation this year, she ensured that each award winner received the recognition they deserved. Also during the second quarter, Liz received several positive Guardian entries for her skill and efforts while working on our website administration, coordinating and publishing our annual report, and promoting positive departmental social media stories. And all these activities were in addition to her normal, regular duties that she does. And I can tell you, I depend on Liz, and she does a fantastic job day in and day out. And I'm proud to recognize her as our employee of the second quarter. You're welcome.
Thank you, again, Chief, and all the award winners and our participants in the police, student police academy, and everyone that was involved in that, and everyone that was involved in National Night Out last Thursday night. Yes, yes, Councilwoman.
I just want to say, that was my daughter who spoke, and I can't say enough good things. When a teenager comes home and she wants to sit and tell you about her day and how she has more questions than what she learns. They kept them engaged and active, and I thank you so much to the Dunwoody Police Department. You guys did a great job and spread the word. Thank you.
Thank you all for coming. And now, if council will humor me and allow me to move the proclamation, but before public comment, I can't remember, do we need to vote on this? Okay, we don't need to vote on this. All right. So if that's okay with everybody on council, Sharon, if we could move to the proclamation, please, that would be great.
A proclamation. Whereas Jerry Ray spent more than 50 years in the athletic training profession, including 25 years in the NFL. And whereas Jerry Ray grew up in Texas, attended Texas A&amp;M, served in the U.S. Army after graduation, and worked as a high school football trainer for several years before moving up to pro football. And whereas Jerry Ray was hired as an athletic trainer for the Atlanta Falcons in 1969 and worked in this position through 1994. He moved to the front office as an assistant to the president of the Atlanta Falcons Youth Foundation until 2001. And whereas Jerry was inducted into the inaugural Georgia Athletic Trainers Association Hall of Fame in 2004, the Hall honored him with an annual award in his name, the Jerry Ray Athletic Trainer of the Year Award. And whereas Jerry Ray received the Award of Excellence from the Pro Football Hall of Fame and was recognized as part of the inaugural plastering enshrinement week in June 2022 in Canton, Ohio. And whereas Jerry Ray is a longtime Dunwoody resident, described as selfless and humble, he is active in the community and in his church, Dunwoody United Methodist, where he supports homebound members, served as an usher for many years, and made a special effort to keep members connected during the pandemic. Now, therefore, I, Lynn Deutsch, Mayor of the city of Dunwoody, do hereby recognize and commend Jerry Ray for his dedication to his profession and contributions to the community. He is an example of inspiration to colleagues, friends, and family. Furthermore, I hereby proclaim August 8th, 2022, as Jerry Ray Day in the city of Dunwoody, and urge all citizens to join me in recognizing him for all his accomplishments. And witness whereof, I have herein to set my hand and cause the seal of the city of Dunwoody, Georgia, to be a fix this 8th day of August, 2022.
I know this, but I'm married to an Aggie.
Are you ready?
And I have a son that's an Aggie and a daughter that's about to be a senior at Texas A&amp;M. We have that in common.
Been a few years since I was there.
Yeah. And I'm going to let you say a few words, but I just wanted to say a few first, if that's okay. So when I was learning about you, I was particularly touched by the work you did during the pandemic to make people feel connected. As mayor, I was really worried about people being isolated and alone, particularly people that maybe lived alone or were homebound. And so that really warmed my heart. And so on top of the proclamation, I'd like to give you a key to the city, Dunwoody. And to honor you for all your contributions to our community and beyond. And so thank you for living in our community and sharing your time and talent with the people that live here and thrive here, and you're part of the success of our community. So thank you so much.
Thank you so much.
I'm going to take a mirror and speak first. If you, yeah, do you want to say a few words right here? So we can hear you in the microphone and see you. Come over here, so the people at home can see you, because you're on Zoom right there.
Okay, oh, thank you. Well, thanks so much. You know, I moved to Atlanta a little over 50 years ago, John and I did. And I lived elsewhere until about 22 years ago, and I always had my sights set on Dunwoody. And when I moved here, it was a town. It was a town of people that were friendly. You saw them in the grocery store. They knew who you were. You knew what was going on. You had good communication. We had just a wonderful town. Now it's a city. It's crowded, but it's still a wonderful town. And it's just a pleasure to be recognized in your own hometown. And thank you so much for all you people that turned out tonight, just to recognize me. I'd like to recognize my son and his wife Diane, and if you'll stand up. And my wife Linda, up here on the front row. This is my support group and will be for the rest of my life, and they'll be insured someday. But again, thank you for coming out. It's a great honor. Never dreamed of anything like this. And the key to the city, watch out, I'm going to unlock some doors now. Thank you so much.
Come on up, everybody.
I'm from my church family in Calhoun, my seven years.
Right.
You don't have a church, you got room for you.
I'm going to give everybody just a minute to exit. Okay. All right. Councilwoman Harris makes her way back up here. We will return to the agenda and begin public comments. We have 30 minutes allotted for public comment. Each speaker gets three minutes. And when 30 minutes is over, we will have a second public comment session, section, if anyone would like to speak at the end of the meeting. And I'll start with I'll start with Ralph Emile. And if you'll just, I didn't check. If you'll just make sure the green light is on the microphone, so that it's on.
I believe it is.
Thank you. If you'll speak in the microphone, you'll have three minutes, sir.
Yes, ma'am. I'm calling in regard or involved in regard to the multi-use pads. I'm calling in regard or involved in regard to the multi-use paths. And I wanted to implore you folks to reconsider multi-use paths on Tilly Mill Road. I don't think they're necessary. I think they would be dangerous because of the amount of traffic. Also, I think if you want to reconsider. By putting out a survey. And the survey that not 49 people. But a survey that I'm sure that you can get volunteers together from the air, from the, all the subdivisions. To put, to put them in all the, all the homes and get some real feedback in regard to that. I would certainly volunteer in regard to that. And that's all I have to say. And thank you.
Thank you. Barbara Bahaba.
Good evening. I'm also here to address the proposed path outside my neighborhood, which is Holland Court, and it's adjacent to Tilly Mill. I just read today online on the Dunwoody City website that the Sustainability Committee, one of their proposed agenda items is. To include a discussion to protect and restore the community's natural resources. And I truly believe that this plan, the path as it is currently planned, will destroy our natural resources in Dunwoody. One of the ideas that has been proposed for this trail, it's a, the trail network will, among other things, generally improve the quality of life in Dunwoody. But not as planned and not for our neighborhood. So I am, I'm very. Much looking forward to our neighborhoods meeting with the city council so that we can discuss it further. We need to improve the quality of life for all those in Dunwoody, including the homeowners, who will be directly impacted by this proposed trail. And as I said, I look forward to further discussion. To share our concerns, to possibly reach a solution that will not only benefit all the residents. But will ensure that we are proud of the community enhancements that our city puts in place. In order for this path to be successful, if it happens, it needs to be a collaboration among all the people. That are in Dunwoody, the residents and the city leaders. Thanks for your time.
Thank you. Alan Miller.
Hi, Mayor and Council. This is my second time coming up here. Thank you very much for your time. I'm Dr. Alan Miller. I have been an internist in this area. Since 1996. I currently have an office in the 4553 building, the North Shallowford Building, which as you know, has been the subject of some, some issues. And currently there are seven businesses in there that will be tremendously and greatly affected. By a potential possible sale of the property that is. Either pending or may happen. I don't believe the council at one, at any time has thought about the seven businesses there that are going to be greatly affected. And an estimate. Of what it will cost for us to be relocated and to move is anywhere between $500,000 and $1.2 million. Relocating medical businesses is, is an issue. My office particularly is an issue. This is that I'm a Pharma FDA office, some an FDA credit offices, and I do clinical trials for Pharma and FDA. So it even causes a bigger issue in regard to the relocation. The current process has been so much shady at best. There's been a lot of issues regarding how this turned about regarding the inability, or at least no one wanted to buy the property at the original zoning. And so it appears that when Emory. Made a comment about potentially leaving the building on the front part of the, the property. A plan was devised to rezone the property. If it already been zoned once, a couple of times to a zoning that would allow them to build a five, six-story monstrosity in front of a brand new home, a housing complex. And that also facilitated getting us out of the, of the, of the building. Now I do understand that there's been a 45-year land lease that is coming up as well. But honestly, no one ever took into consideration the doctors in that building and how difficult it is to move plus. To find a place and then to get supplies and obviously building, which takes a tremendous amount of time and effort. I don't understand why the, I would want to bring in a, an Emory building of that sort into this area. The, their history has not been one that's been good to the medical communities in the general area. But that's y'all's, y'alls deal. I urge y'all to reconsider this and to think about the seven buildings that will be under tremendous stress, financial. Physical and emotional stress as well. You will also kill off pretty much the remaining private practices in the area for. An organization that is actually the most expensive in the United States. I do want to say one thing is that the representative of your, the, the representative from. From the.
Thank you, Dr. Miller.
Minister Sheets tried to bribe us.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Aleem Hab. I saw you earlier.
Afternoon, members of city council. I've come towards you a couple of times talking about the same general topic of supporting the Dunwoody Police Department. Conveniently today, I had no idea this agenda was going on. So quite funny. But anyways, I've come towards you talking about retaining attraction support. Today, I kind of want to talk to you about the money. So how are we going to pay for this? So what I want to do is propose an idea that might give you another tool in your toolbox to be able to support and help, you know, pretty much the agenda. Through the course of open records requests, which the city of Dunwoody have been very helpful with and our open checkbook, we're very, very transparent about how we use money. I mean. If the mayor bought a Diet Coke, I think it would show up as a line item. It's kind of funny. But outside of that, that with the transparency of the internal audit request, I've done a really good job of being able to kind of identify where the money's at right now. So we have a bunch of different bank accounts that kind of go about that we use for different purposes, for the jail, not for the jail, for the, for the court, for other things. And then we seem to have this excess bank account. Now disclosure number one, these numbers are probably wrong. The numbers are from December 31st, so they're probably horribly wrong. But anyway, it showed we had something about 15 million. Sitting in an excess bank account earning about 0.21% interest. Looking at our internal audits, again. I spot checked this. It might be wrong. Showed that we made about $200,000 of interest revenue in 20, and then 20,000 in 21. Which, which makes sense with COVID and everything dropping on interest rates. Anyways, we take the 15 million sitting in that excess bank account. I don't think we have any sort of Dunwoody emergency that required $15 million. And if we were to put it in a no risk, one-year treasury bill, the current rate today is 3.29% issued by the US government. I don't think. City council should be too worried about the risk of a one-year treasury bill. That would generate somewhere around the lines of $493,000. We're a municipality. We do not pay taxes. That money allocated to our 40-something officers plus all the other command staff, a lot of money. Let's say that we decide that that's not suitable, that we don't want to put all that money, that we only put 10 million. Again, rough estimates, that would come up to about $300,000 that we could use towards doing whatever we want to make ourselves quite competitive with our police department. Again, disclosures, number one, numbers are probably wrong based on the fact that all our numbers are a little different since December 31st, and I'm piecemealing things together. Number two, it's easy for, you know, someone from any of us to take our money and do whatever we want. But of course, as a city government, you have all sorts of regulations. I mean, I wouldn't be surprised if. Councilmember Henigan wanted a pencil sharpener, took a special council meeting, right? So it, you know, government operates a little differently than people. But anyways, that's my idea. That's what's going on. I'll try to talk a little bit more to the finance committee, something to look at. Also, is it sustainable in our current interest rate environment? I would think that this would be sustainable for the next couple of years. So we take the excess money, we put it in treasury bills or even CDs, provided we're allowed to do that. And I think we can generate a lot of cash to keep, give Chief Grogan. Enough in his artillery to do whatever he needs to do to keep the city safe. Thank you. Bye-bye.
Thank you. Travis Reed. Thank you. You'll have three minutes. Please speak into the microphone.
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you, Council. Thank you for having me. Dunwoody became a city in 2007, as we all know, and how time has flown by. But 15 years later, and here we are, facing challenges at every growing city in our metro area and during. But something feels different here. As we see our neighbors, as we see our neighbors who became cities around the same time, like Sandy Springs, Brookhaven, and older cities like Alpharetta and Roswell, making vast improvements in their city limits. You begin to wonder what is holding this city back from making similar investments in parks, pass and infrastructure. We became a city to keep our fate in our hands, but it appears that we are at conflict with ourselves on the direction we want to take. Younger families are asking for improvements while older citizens are still believe we're in the eighties. However, Dunwoody is no longer the agricultural-based whistle stop of the 1880s. Or the Atlanta bedroom community of the 1980s. We are a small city in the center of a 7 million person megalopolis, and the growth isn't stopping. It's engulfing us. We need to collectively come to terms that we are not a rural island, and that if we don't start to invest in our community's commons and infrastructure, this city is going to run out of things to tout. Comparatively speaking, our schools are average, yet our traffic is exceptional. And compared to our neighbors, our entertainment options are getting lapped by cities who invested in their downtown entertainment areas. So other, so other than location, what does Dunwoody have to offer in say the next 10, 20, 60 years when it's 2080? As our, as our neighbors improve, while we still debate what direction to take. Our city needs a bond to reinvest in a mayor and a council to advocate for it. We need to reinvest in our city to maintain competitiveness with other areas. We need to invest in a pedestrian pass system that can integrate with other metro pass systems for better connectivity. We need to invest in our infrastructure so that it doesn't take 30 minutes to go down Mount Vernon during rush hour. We need to accept the fact that we are in the middle of other cities in 285. And when 285 is gridlocked, where do you think Waze and other apps are sending that traffic? Dunwoody neighborhood streets as people look to escape gridlock. The secret shortcuts are no more. They have now become part of the infrastructure. When I read we've been debating pass systems for the past 10 years, what else do we need to do? How much more due diligence, feedback and citizen panels do we need to research to finally hear that we are looking for improvement now? The village redevelopment was discussed in '07, yet here we are. I realize that at council, you are fiduciary responsibility, but our inactivity, inactivity is costing the city and lost opportunity. And the longer we wait. The more expensive it is going to be. The lack of comparable amenities, the more people are going to take their dollars elsewhere as we are compared with other municipalities. And if we're hoping to achieve 100 consistence, that's not going to happen. Compromise is key. Look at Brook Run. Look at the striking, the objections. Save the trees. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Malcolm. I'm, I'm going to think I'm going to let you say your own last name. Sorry. And just speak into the microphone. You'll have three minutes.
All right. Hello. Good evening, council. My name is Malcolm Malavia. I live two minutes that way. Probably maybe two and a half minutes. And I want to also introduce some of our newest Dunwoodians. These are my twin daughters. Number five and six, six kids under eight years old. Were growing Dunwoody. Yes, fun, fun. So on June 23rd, I had to call 911 because one of my daughters had troubles breathing, even stopping breathing several times. It was a very frightening thing to see. I've worked, I volunteered in the ER for three years. I've seen some pretty wild things, but when it shears in your hand and you're helpless. It's a whole different story. I called 911. And it took 14 minutes and 52 seconds for the first responder to get to my house. There's a fire truck. I lived two minutes that way. 14 minutes, 52 seconds. It took a total of 29 minutes for an ambulance to get to my house. Fire trucks can't transport. So if my daughter, thank God she was okay, everything turned out fine. But that was because of God. He saved. If I had to rely on our system of 911, it would be a different story right now. Fact. 100%. 29 minutes for a transport, emergency transport to get to my house. I lived two minutes that way. The ambulance driver said they were at North Druid Hills and I-85 when they got dispatched to us. It was like around 4:52, 5 o'clock traffic. She was confused. I made a Facebook post wondering if this is an isolated thing, which was a very scary thing. And my first reaction was not to make the post because I don't want to scare people about using 911. And I'm so glad I did because the amount of stories, I'm getting chills right now. The amount of stories I see on there, oh, something like this just happened to us, something like this just happened. So I reached out and asked for some numbers and what's going on and, and I'll tell you what, what happened with some of it. So just so you know. Decap fire, 90% of calls are answered within nine minutes and 23 minutes, nine, nine minutes and 23 seconds of call. That means that by the time they got there, it'd be nine minutes and 23 seconds have already passed. It would take an ambulance on average for the month of May for a cab, 20 minutes and eight seconds to get to you. If you need to be emerg, had emergency transfer to the hospital. That is a long time. My daughter, had she completely stopped breathing, would have brain damage within four to six, between four and six minutes permanent. It shouldn't take a horrible situation. Something going so wrong like it did for something else to happen. And I think we got lucky. And I think this is an opportunity to show weaknesses in our system. I got the report and it says that it took nine minutes and 19 seconds for the first responder to get to my house. That is false.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Mr. Hickey.
Madam Mayor, Council, I appreciate it very much. My name is Bob Hickey. I'm a Dunwoody citizen for about 45 years. I appreciate your time tonight. I'm here tonight to talk about the issue with the guns that were on the city council agenda two weeks ago tonight. They were on the agenda to get the council approval of disposition of them. Okay. They're gone from the council agenda tonight, but they snuck their way on the city manager's agenda that they're going to be sold in a sealed bid. To a guy for $800, $800. Now in case the rest of the people out here don't know, those are 66 guns. That have been in the hands of the Dunwoody Police since 2009. 2009. And we're in a hurry to sell them. So they, it disappeared from the agenda two weeks ago and not on the agenda tonight. So why did it require city council approval two weeks ago? And it doesn't require city council approval tonight? 66 guns. Eight of them have no serial numbers. Okay, I've checked with a lot of law enforcement people, and if you sell a couple of guns, okay, with no serial numbers, that's called illegal trafficking in guns. Illegal trafficking in guns. Where's, where's Chief Grogan? I have 60, I have eight guns I want to sell you tonight. Send one of your guys toward me and see how long I'm not in jail. Okay. Two of those, two of those 66 guns, okay, at least two were used in suicides. 22 of them are, are called Saturday night specials. Okay, little bitty guns that you can put in two pockets in your shoes. Okay. The little bitty guns that you can put in your hand and the policeman, police officer stopped you at midnight. He said, put your hands up, okay? And the policeman pulled his hand, a gun down.
Talk to the microphone, please.
And I shoot him. The gun could be hid in my hand. 22 of those Saturday night specials, and the city wants to dispose of them at sale. I say destroy them. Destroy them. Now you said that the law says you have to sell them. I don't read the law that way. Okay. And I, I, I'm not a lawyer, but I don't read it that way. The law says. A city police chief can certify. That the gun is not safe or has been, has been altered. And they can then ship them to the forensic department of the state of Georgia and they can destroy them. Okay. I don't care what the law says. I say common sense says destroy 66 guns. That's all. 66 guns. Eight with no serial numbers. Quit trafficking in illegal guns. Destroy them.
Thank you. Mr. Simon, I have two cards for you, but you can speak one time. And okay, at this session, you're welcome to wait till the end of the meeting.
My name's Tom Simon. I'm with Stevens Walk Neighborhood. I'm here to talk about the multi-use path. I sent this email to the council and mayor. Anyone who wants a copy of it, it explains in many details. About 10 or 15 reasons why a multi-use path should not be put on the east side and why it should be put on the west side. I want to thank the mayor and the several council members who responded to my email. Basically, I'll go over a few of the main reasons. The cost. To put a multi-use path on the west side is 3.5 million, I've been told. East side, 4.2 million. It's going to cost $700,000 more to put it on the east side. We could actually take that $700,000. We could actually take that seven hundred thousand dollars and give it to the gentleman to make sure that his child can uh. An emergency vehicle can get to him quicker. You can spend it that wisely that way. There were three hundred trees approximately that would have to be cut down on the east side. Twenty-five. Would have to be cut down on the west side. I drove up and down yesterday about ten times and counted them. If you put, I mean, that in itself would preclude putting a. Multi-use path on the east side. Cutting down twenty-five on the west side and three hundred on the east side. To me, it's a no-brainer. Actually, an environmental study would have to be required if you cut down that many trees on the east side. Because of the shade loss, the erosion and the water problems. I was told that there are eleven residents with driveways on the west side. And that was one of the reasons why they were thinking of putting it on the east side. Well, I, I checked it. There are seven and, seven residences. With drivers on the east side. So a difference of four driveways. You want to spend seven hundred thousand dollars more and kick and cut down almost three hundred more trees. Lastly, I'll just say, I drove it again numerous times yesterday. And two-thirds of the total distance on the west side from Mount Vernon all the way down to Womack. You would have no obstruction. There is a twelve-foot wide span, an actual lane, if you will. Along with the JCC property. Where there are no trees you'd have to cut down and this twelve-foot wide lane. All you have to do is just clear it, put the path there, and you've got it all the way to the south side of the JCC plant. I am, I am amazed that it's even being considered for the east side. I saw yesterday. Pardon me, bikers using this path, this twelve-foot wide extra lane on the west side. Going back and forth on their bikes as well as walkers. So. I wish you'd reconsider. The obvious side and the likely side.
Thank you. Joe Hirsch. Sharon, how, do we have plenty of time? Okay, thank you. Speak into the microphone and you'll have three minutes.
Thank you. It's, it's nice that the city congratulates and offers honors at the beginning of the meetings and those are deserved and those should go well. But let's not hide the fact that this city is broken. Please fix what's in your own house before wasting any more of our time and money. Several topics to go over this evening. First, the proposed ordinance restricting the use of gravel in someone's yard, regardless of the merits. Which it's certainly lacking. This is garbage. You know, there's absolutely no way our city will enforce it, zero chance. Except perhaps to the one constituent who asked you to write this code. So the city will once again be practicing selective enforcement. Which brings me to a dangerous situation that you, Mayor Lynn, our city manager, Eric Clinton. And community development director, Richard McCloud are very familiar with. And that is your inability to have our codes enforced. You both know firsthand that there's a resident who has spoken to you both on multiple occasions over the past year, literally begging you for help. But you've done nothing. You are also aware that the resident says that his family is very afraid of something violent happening to his family. Because the resident keeps reporting the neighbor for egregious violations, which were even occurring today. But no one from court enforcement has done anything because they say they are too busy. Let me be clear to you both, Mayor Eric. If something happens to this resident, that's blood on your hands. It's not a joke. No more begging for help. No more being polite. It's despicable. You need to do something or resign. Is it not, is not humorous anymore. Richard McCloud thinks it's funny. Also tonight, you have an update to our vision and mission statements for the city. Those are worthless because Eric and you mayor don't abide by them. You swore to uphold them, but you don't. Onto my next subject. Let me see if the taxpayers of the city, a hundred and seventeen thousand dollars you have on the agenda tonight that you're going to hire a consultant to study the police department. Why waste our money? You just bragged about how wonderful they are. I can tell you though. The problem, as you know, is with our chief and other top brass. You know this, yet you seem to, to continue to waste money on this. I can tell you with firsthand knowledge that there'll be another big story coming from the media about the corruption in our police department very soon. As well as other matters that are going to implicate Grogan and others. So why are you spending a hundred and seventeen thousand dollars on this? Turn on the news. You know what's going on. The city is broken, mayor, and you are at the helm. And I'm tired of asking you to do your jobs. Stop spending money, stop hiring consultants, stop writing laws that are never going to be enforced. Ask Richard McCloud and he'll tell you they won't. If you can't uphold your oath of office and take care of matters, or if someone gets hurt. Mayor, I'm looking at you. Do your job.
Our welcomes, Wilkinson.
Hello, uh. Mayor, city council members, thank you for the opportunity to speak. I am representing. Hello, I am representing one of several businesses that will be negatively impacted by the proposed sale of property of forty-five fifty-three. And forty-five fifty-five North Shallowford Road. Uh, impacts there include forced relocation, increase in ongoing costs to replace a, a. Place of business. Uh, cost to remodel a new location. Loss of existing investments in the current location impacts the clientele and employees. So I wanted to ask the council and the mayor if you're aware of some of the tactics that are being deployed, employed. In regard to this. Specifically harassment of existing occupants. Bribery. Offers and threats. Uh, this kind of behavior is something you expect in a gangster movie, something out of. Chicago mobsters or New York union thugs or something like that, not in Georgia. Uh, so the action by representative of the city and according to the city's charter, Article Eight Ethics. Employees are defined as anybody who has a relationship acting on behalf of the city, including contractors. And this uh, action, I'll be happy to go into detail, given the time, uh, was taken by a particular employee of the city. Um, so. I don't know if anyone's aware of this, but now you're aware, so I ask that you take action on this. End the relationship with the entity, call yours, representing the city. Condemn the behavior and that you do not proceed with the sale. Additionally, for the offer document, the closing data stated as honored before August thirty-first, twenty twenty-two. The amendment for document that's up for discussion tonight as well. States its condition of purchase that all persons or entities must voluntarily leave by the closing date or be dispossessed by the sheriff. I don't think any of us were aware of this and nor are we expecting to be thrown out by August the thirty-first. So. I don't know if you're aware of this either, but I can't imagine it's the intent and, but it certainly looks like. Use of police power to facilitate the sale of this property. And that does not smell. Nice. It doesn't, it doesn't seem right because we have existing leases that are in effect. So I ask that the city not proceed with the sale. Full stop. If you decide to go forward anyway, I ask that the city not. I have asked, asked the city not proceed with the offer until the offer that was made to me is honored. And equivalent may arrangements be made with all the other tenants in the space.
Thank you very much, sir. That concludes this session of public comments. If anyone is, um, remains at the end of the meeting, we will have another session where people can have another opportunity. Uh, now we're on to reports and presentations, Eric Lynn.
Thank you, Mayor. The, um, under the police department, the police department will be hosting, or hosted this national night out. Brook Run Park last Thursday was a, it was a great event, same time as the food truck event. And uh, as you mentioned earlier, Mayor, we did have a storm came in about an hour and a half into the event. But uh, it had a nice turnout from the citizens of the city. The um, the department's also conducting a citizen, citizen response, active shooter event. Actually, that occurred last Wednesday at the North Shallowford Annex. And we also had our pack of patrol car um, to collect school supplies for needy children. And that ran through the August fourth uh, national night out. At Brook Run Park. The police department and DeKalb County School District Police came together to conduct an active shooter table, tabletop exercise. This is something that the chief and his department had been working on uh, for several years and we finally, um, the DeKalb County School Police. Agreed to work with us um, on the schools within the city of Dunwoody. Also, our North Metro SWAT team was used to execute a search warrant at an apartment complex on Shamley Dunwoody Road in reference to a drug sale. And there also three overdoses had occurred. Incidents that occurred at that location as well. So that was a, a good execution of the SWAT team. The crime response team conducted a destructive driving detail in the PCID area. And we issued twenty citations and had one arrest during those stops. As you read through the rest of the report. You'll see many events that are occurring within the city. I'll let you read that at your leisure. Under Public Works, we have the Spalding Drive Detour will begin on Dunwoody Road and Shamley Dunwoody Road. Approximately August fifteenth through September thirtieth. This is to put in the stormwater facility that goes underneath the road there. Also, on the, on that same project further up towards the intersection of Shamley Dunwoody and Spalding. That part of the intersection is complete. There's actually a picture that shows in your report on that. And we're just doing final punch list items there. Uh, Georgetown Gateway, that project continues to move forward. Three hundred and ninety feet of stormwater pipes been installed. Along that road, there are some minor traffic delays during the daytime, nine AM to four PM in that area. The Shamley Dunwoody Womack intersection, uh, work has begun on retaining wall adjacent to the library. And other utility relocations are going on there. Also, the same daytime. Uh, work hours, nine AM to four PM in that area. Our Parks Department um, has several events coming up at next quarter. That we wanted to go ahead and, and get out there, which is October first, Hispanic Heritage Dunwoody Arts Cultural Month, Month Celebration. October eighth, Grooving on the Green, this is the season finale. Um, October twenty-seventh, our trunk or treat. And then we have our Veterans Day celebration coming up in November at our Holiday Lights opening night, December the first. So please put those on your calendars. Those are events coming up um, next quarter. Uh, grills, we replaced the grills in the area at Parnishaw Park. Um, also, we had our groundbreaking on July the twenty-fifth at fifty perimeter center east. On our five acre park there, which will include the city's first splash pad. They have a playground there, a small and large pavilion, restroom facilities, exercise equipment and trails. And that should be completed um, within the next year. The High Street Development is continuing its build out. With mixed-use residential buildings reaching uh, three and four stories respectively. Permitting continues for Campus two four four project. Which includes the rehabilitation of that office and the construction of a hotel and parking deck. The path and sidewalk are nearing completion at the perimeter marketplace. That's, that just says a few punch list items. And the trees and plants along that corridor have been installed. Um, the department has completed six hundred and five building inspections. Uh, code enforcement has issued uh, thirty-three warnings and twelve citations since the last report. And the staff has conducted a hundred and thirty-nine code enforcement inspections, including twelve vacant properties. We've also issued three stop work orders for projects that were not in compliance. Uh, economic development, August twenty-second, Edge City update to the city council is coming up. And then uh, September fifteenth, there's a meeting with the Dunwoody Development Authority. And so the Edge City two point O process is to create a shared vision for economic, for the economic vision for the perimeter. Um, area and the commercial market. And we've had a stakeholder advisory committee workshop was held July twenty-first and the update, as I mentioned, will be August the twenty-second. Moving through the report, under communications, we have a ribbon cutting on August the seventeenth. With chicken salad chick, it's opening up and also Backpack Buddies, August the twelfth. Um, we have inside Dunwoody, which is uh, some links within your report. For the August newsletter, we also have the City of Dunwoody Department Quarterly Report has a link in here. And also um, our ambassador newsletter as well. Under finance, completed the twenty twenty-one workers' comp audit with our insurance provider. The finance report is also contained within this document. Um, and also finance applied for the Germa. Uh, it's our insurance company, safety and workers' comp grant, which would be a total of twenty thousand dollars if awarded. Municipal court. Has the, uh, disposed of six hundred and one cases. Forty-one cases have been reset. We did hold our amnesty program. We'll have the final numbers on that. It's a program we've done pretty much annually for anyone who is um. That they're out of compliance with the court, gives them the opportunity to come into the court, pay their fees and not be faced with a warrant down the road. Uh, the city also has filled its four, you know, four of its police officer positions. Uh, two public, uh, two police service representatives and also we filled our deputy city clerk position as well. I, along with the city staff are happy to answer any questions you may have on this report.
Um, questions? We can start on Thompson because I looked that way first.
Uh, yeah, tha- thanks Eric. I don't have any questions, but uh, since there was a, a comment made in the public comments about the disposal of the uh, of the weapons. That were mentioned in the report, could either you or Ken just give a comment as to state law on that and how that is handled?
Yeah, it's, it's fairly detailed when it comes to the disposition of weapons as opposed to other property of the city. Uh, we have stated that there is no, uh, pin, the, the city council cannot reject any bids or cancel any proposed sale. The sale pursuant to an order that was entered July second of twenty twenty-one. After a year provides the police chief with the specifics on how to dispose of weapons. And so the only discretion is whether or not the weapon is unsafe or illegal to sell. Uh, and so if the police chief determines that a weapon is unsafe or illegal to sell. There's a disposition through the GBI or forensic laboratory for experiment and study. As to every other weapon unless he determines it's, it's. If every other weapon, it determines is not unsafe. There is no right of this council to reject any bid related to the sale as it's governed by state law. And it's not a sale to the general public. You have to be a specific federally licensed, uh, either. Uh, firearm collector, dealer, importer, or manufacturer whose license allows the transaction in bulk of these particular weapons. So it's not sold to the public a, a, as a, at large. But I'm the one that took it off the agenda, so we want to make sure it's clear because I don't think it should have ever been on there to begin with. Once the court order which allows the sale pursuant to law. Or destruction pursuant to law, which again, only provides the police chief with the discretion to determine if the weapon is unsafe or illegal to sell. Once that's triggered, then the sale goes through the process of bid prescribed by this particular statute. And the council has no weight to reject or, or cancel those bids. Unlike other property that the council would have a discretion to cancel or reject bids, you don't have it in this case. So I instructed Eric and I also sent out the opinion, which is a lot more detailed than my summary. There that for transparency sake, it should appear in his report telling you that they're complying with the law. I will say I've gone over the law with the police chief. I've gone to the law with Eric and I've prized you all of that opinion. It's also been checked with Germa, by the way. They went to the head lawyer at Germa to check my opinion. And I think Eric can say he concurs with my opinion on the matter regarding firearms. So it's not going on the street to ad hoc. It's a specific, very detailed uh, uh, regiment. And if somebody wants to change that, they need to lobby the legislature because y'all don't really have control over it.
All right, thank you for that explanation.
Rob.
I have another question related to police. Um, we just added a, a number of new officers. Where do we stand in terms of staffing with the police department right now?
The chief's going to come up. He's going to address that. Thank you.
As of this day, we have seven openings.
Thank you.
Right.
Well, I, well, actually I had one, one other kind of, kind of comment just um, related to uh, code enforcement. I have had very limited involvement with the city's code staff, but I did reach out on behalf of a constituent. Earlier this month and discovered that code enforcement had actually already gone out. So I, they seemed to be pretty responsive in the one interaction I had. Um, so just a, a compliment to, to the staff on that.
I'll add on to that one better. I had a constituent reach out and I.
I'll add on to that one better. I had a constituent reach out and I reached out this morning and it was resolved by this afternoon. Code enforcement. Thank you.
Um, Chief, since today was the first day of school and, um, I'd kind of like you to give a little bit more detail about your tabletop with, uh, DeKalb County School Police and what all you guys did and, and how you would prepare if the unspeakable were, were to ever happen here.
Sure. So we met with, uh, staff from our department as well as staff from the DeKalb School Police Met. And in the tabletop exercise, we kind of role played and discussed what would happen if, um, you know, something unspeakable would happen at one of the schools. We went over each of our schools in Dunwoody and what, uh, the responses would be, where the students would go and, uh, that sort of thing. And so that's what we did for each of the schools in Dunwoody.
And then is it the job of then DeKalb County School Police to communicate to that, to, to the principals, to then give it to the teachers or what?
Yeah, I mean, the, the camp school police is ultimately responsible for the campus. Uh, they police the campus and we assist uh, when requested. Certainly, you know, if there was an active shooter event at one of the schools, it would involve multiple agencies, not just ours. Uh, all the surrounding agencies would come as well.
Thank you. I'm glad that you were able to finally have, sit down with them.
Chief, hey, Chief. Um, by the way, speaking of that, starting to school, we know there's a lot of traffic and speeding and stuff, um, sure, and appreciate, right? We can't r- regulate everybody every time and we have, we have fi- fixed resources, but y'all paying a little bit more attention of the speeding zones and, and by the way, aside is talking about legislature, right? The idea of those speed cameras and so on. Right. So could you maybe hit a couple of those, how we're addressing the, the traffic and then?
We, um, uh, obviously know that school started today, and so we deployed staff at the different schools, both the uniformed staff that works on a shift as well as CRT to conduct speed enforcement and just be visible in the, uh, area around the schools. I don't know, I haven't seen it yet, but I think we wrote about fifteen or between fifteen and twenty tickets citations today in the school zones. And, uh, you know, it's always, uh, worse at the beginning of the school year. Uh, and then traffic seems to slowly improve over the first week or two, uh, after school starts. As far as the, the, uh, uh, speed enforcement cameras, uh, we're still at an impasse over that, although there has been some progress. Uh, Shandley is kind of leading the way in some discussions with DeKalb, and so I'm hopeful, cautiously optimistic that we could get some movement on that. Otherwise, it would be, um, you know, us trying to take another stab through the legislative action.
Right, thanks. And just for the audience, that's the DeKalb County School District. So, for example, in Gwinnett, so right now state law has to go through the school, not the local municipal, if you want to put speed cameras in. But, uh, Gwinett, Gwinett, are they're doing it in Gwinett?
Sure, uh, Gwinett is doing it and, uh, the school system in Gwinett allows their school police chief to sign off on the applications.
Right, right. Okay. Well, I appreciate that update, Chief. Thanks. Um, just Eric in general, thank you for the, for the, uh, detailed, um, report. You know, I'm in my, well, my third year on term here and as an at-large citizen. I remember back in the day, um, you know, being able to see what we're having here, what's not only what you've done, but what's upcoming. It's very clean. It's easy to read and it's, it's transparent. So, um, you know, I, I really like to appreciate the, the level of detail and, and the standardization that we have of this for transparency of what we're doing for our citizens. Thank you.
Councilman Hennigan.
Yeah, I'd also like to say thank you for the, uh, city manager report. It is very detailed, almost to the point that I was afraid to share it to, uh, one of my constituents when it said a suicide at a specific place. I was worried that person's family would see that, so. But thank you for the overall due diligence. Thank you to Billy Grogan, Chief Grogan, for attending the Dunwoody Homeowners Association last night. He answered questions for about thirty-five minutes, being peppered from left and right, as well as council members, uh, trying to remember to tell him to say a few things. And then finally, I'd also like to, uh, thank, uh, our community, uh, development office or, or code enforcement office. I have a neighborhood that, uh, pulled out emails going back eight years on various houses and this house and this house and this thing, that thing. And code enforcement was able to go through and either revisit or show the history of each one of those code enforcement actions and the actions that they've taken throughout the years and the repeat visits, as well as the visits that happened just last week when I asked. So I, I appreciate everybody's, uh, due diligence from the city's perspective. Thank you.
Um, Chief, are you still there? Sorry. Um, can you discuss a little bit about what makes a gun unsafe? That in other words, what, depending on whether you turn it over to the forensics, state forensics, or you sell it?
Sure. I mean, it would be like the firing pin was, uh, messed up. If it was missing parts from the weapon, those sorts of things.
So were these guns we've had since the city began?
No, uh, they were, there, there are some from various years, uh, I think, starting in two thousand nine. But, uh, multiple years, uh, I don't, I don't have the list in front of me, so I don't remember exactly the last year, but it's from multiple years.
Okay.
And we, what we try to do typically is we get court orders periodically allowing us to get rid of weapons, but it's not. We don't want to get rid of two or three, so we typically wait, and we've done this over the years, wait till we get a number of them that we're able to process at one time.
So I actually think the state law is that you have to do it annually because when they changed the law in two thousand twelve, Atlanta just stopped disposing of the guns in any way. And so in two thousand fifteen, they amended the law that, so just, just so you know. So I'm not very happy about this. I have a lot of concerns. I'm not anti-gun, but, um, and I'm on the Legislative Policy Committee for the Georgia Municipal Association, and in September, we're meeting with our county counterparts. And I'm going to bring this up. I consulted my own municipal attorney today, I mean, uh, somebody from the Georgia Municipal Association, and this seems to be, in fact, from two thousand twelve to two thousand fifteen, they kind of thought they had a victory because there was no time period, so you could just keep them. But this is a legislative change that needs to happen. Um, and we will work with our lobbyists and our own legislators to see if we can make any progress on this, um, in a state. We are one of fewer than, I think, fifteen states that for, regulate this action of cities. In other words, in the other thirty-something states in the United States, the cities can make their own choices on how to dispose of weapons. And so anyhow, it frustrates me. My second question is for Eric or Richard. I think it would be helpful in the upcoming months as we, because I think at the retreat, was it the retreat or Budget Committee where we added the third pub, uh, third code enforcement, was it Budget Committee? So as we come up this year on the budget, it would be really helpful for us to have a report on how that's working and, you know, what we're doing with that and everything. So just at some point in the next month or two, as we go through the budget process, it would be a good benchmark. All right. Anybody else? Being none, I believe we have a special guest. Uh, from the PATH Foundation. I don't know the person, so I don't know that, I think they're here. Uh, Richard, are you keying up a presentation? Is that what you're doing? Right.
Hi, good evening, Mayor and City Council.
If you could speak in and maybe a little louder, please. Thank you.
And I'm here with my colleague, so I'll introduce him in just a second. I'm Greta DiMeo. I'm with the PATH Foundation and we're here to kind of talk with you about a trail master plan. Uh, before we do that, I do want to introduce Pete Pellegrini. Um, as a nonprofit, PATH was founded thirty-one years ago and Pete was one of the original founders of PATH along with two other, two other individuals, Ed McBrayer and Maxine Rock. So he's here to answer questions at the end with me, uh, but I'll kind of take you through a little bit of, of further introduction. All right, so what does PATH do? Um, we're known for-
Are you sharing presentation, uh, seeing it if Jay or Ginger or somebody could come assist, please?
There you go. It's always easier to top trails when you have a little bit of-
Right, no, we understand. Okay, here it comes. Thank you. Here it comes.
Okay.
We got it. Thank you.
Okay, great, great. So PATH is all about connecting community. That's what we do. That's what we've been doing for, for thirty-one years. And in doing that, we've worked with over thirty communities throughout metro Atlanta and the state of Georgia. That is to really master plan their trail systems. And the result of doing that is really our primary focus. And it is building these wonderful amenities for all ages, abilities, all races, everyone to enjoy. Um, so over the past thirty years, this graphic kind of shows some of the partners that we've had, uh, as a public-private partner. And so trails, in our opinion, are just the inviting experience where people would want to be together. And there's nothing that has really shown us that better than really the pandemic. Tonight, talking about people who are kind of, you know, enclosed alone. We have heard so much over the past two years about how trails have made a difference in people's lives. Um, in doing trails, also there's the environmental side of conservation. Uh, being able to preserve over a thousand acres of green space is what we've been able to do over the past thirty years. Every project has opportunities where we're looking to preserve green space, and that green space is for everyone to enjoy, not only today, but for generations to come. These are legacy projects that will be here for generations after us. So PATH's really become the canvas, though. It becomes the community's canvas to then take ownership of. Whether you want to do public art along the trails, if you want to do community gardens, that's where we really want to just establish kind of the greenway cam- canvas, the linear park. And in doing that, it really brings people out to enjoy fresh air, exercise, and really interact with your neighbors. That is what brings the community together. So in doing that, I'd like to see if anybody present tonight, um, actually walked or biked to the meeting tonight. If you did, show me a raise of hand. Congratulations. How far did you, you bike? Two and a half miles. Awesome. Um, why don't we have more people doing that? That's what we're here about. Um, he probably is an avid cyclist. He's, he's probably comfortable with, with what currently is his route to get here. But I bet the majority of those who are here tonight are not. And that's what we're here to try to find, those opportunities. Those opportunities in a trail system bring multiple benefits. Um, from economic development, we already talked about health and wellness. Uh, the active transportation, you know, if you're a commuter, if you work close to where you live, why do we have to get in our car? Let's get you there in a different way. Um, but really, to me, as a city and the city leadership, you're looking at a main goal of really improving the quality of life of everyone in the city of Dunwoody. And so all these other factors just kind of come along with that. Um, that conservation of green space, creating linear parks so that you don't have just highly used parks, you're spreading out that use. And again, creating just a wonderful sense of community, which I think is whatever, it makes every city just a strong city. And so one of the examples that I always like to give in presentations, because economic development is something that everybody's looking at. Um, everyone knows the Atlanta Beltline. They've got a lot more staff than we've got. We're, we're two of three full-time staff at, at the nonprofit. Uh, Beltline has over fifty, so we kind of take their analytics and we know it's, it's for, it speaks for trails in general. But, you know, you start to look at, um, what that economic engine can do. And I think this is a great graphic because in two thousand and four, this was the aerial, um, kind of satellite image that was showing that part of Atlanta. Um, Freedom Parkway kind of comes through here. We had built that trail for the nineteen ninety-six Olympics. And so you start to see kind of that north-south alignment, which was the abandoned rail corridor. We all wish we had an abandoned rail corridor within our city. So Atlanta was very fortunate with this, and you, you look at this, you fast forward to two years ago, you start to see that, that green space coming in along the corridor, the redevelopment and really people wanting to be there and wanting to have more of a walkable, bikeable type of experience as you're living in a city. So as I was looking at, um, some of your planning exercises to date, it was really interesting to me to see that, you know, you've already established these goals. You've already vetted the need. Of course, you know, your Parks and Recreation Master Plan was five years ago. And so I just achieving pedestrian linkages, greenways, a greenway system is required. You know, I mean, it's like, those are some strong words, linear greenway systems, linking a community together. You know, you go on and you start to realize access to these greenways. We've got to get a neighborhoods connected. Um, you know, there was real strong interest in the expansion of trails and greenways this five years ago. Uh, desire to connect the city parks through greenways, sidewalks, paths. And then you go to your Transportation Master Plan, which was the same timeframe. So five years ago, your, your Transportation Master Plan was looking at, they separated out. We're looking at cars, they're looking at pedestrians, they're looking at bicyclists. Well, that's different than what we look at. We, we look for facilities where we could have bicyclists and pedestrians together. But some of these, these plans still are looking at, okay, where are those bicycle facilities? And really wanting to grow a network of non-motorized infrastructure and how that is needed. Um, how there is a disconnect with the neighborhoods from a walkable, bikeable perspective within the city of Dunwoody. And there's significant gaps that you need to really focus on to make this strong connectivity. So as, as, you know, we fast forward, here we are five years later. And, um, what we have found as a nonprofit is that you're in the same situation most cities are when they reach out to us. You have a Parks Master Plan that was really focused on parks. You have a Transportation Master Plan that was really focused on street right-of-ways. But that's not good enough. You really need to do a trail master plan. In doing that, you can emanate cities similar across the country that are focused on that, and they really have seen that that improves the quality of life. You really need to establish a game plan. It's hard to put a, a trail system together. But you first have to have the vision, you first have to then segment it out. You have to have an implementation strategy, and so that, those are things that you really need very focused planning on. Obviously, you need to engage the community. The community is who is going to tell you, like the gentleman who biked here tonight. If you could go anywhere on your bike or walking from where you lived in Dunwoody, where would you want to go? That's what we need to know. That is the basis of the planning exercise. And so also, it gives us an opportunity to educate, educate people about different types of trails. I've heard a lot tonight about your side pass. Oh, we really need to see how many opportunities can we get outside, you know, not within just road right-of-ways. Your city is very populated, very urban, and the opportunities that we might find today are not going to be there pretty soon. The population, the redevelopment pressures, these are things that we need to look at. We need to get people out of their cars. Traffic's never going to get any better. You know, population grows, so you have to. I was looking at some of your level of service at your intersections and things like that from the transportation engineering perspective. And we just worked, um, recently, I guess recently, it might have been five years ago now, to do a new master plan with the city of Decatur. And Decatur has thrown the level of service out the window. They're like, nope, we're going to really focus on bike and ped within our city because we don't, we cannot build more roads. We cannot expand capacity. So those are some things that are coming. You might not have the pressures that the city of Decatur has right now, but fast forward another five years, you'll be sitting in a different position. So with that, you know, just, I was using all my E-words. I had eight Es that kind of are- I had eight Es that kind of are the why, why you would need a master plan. And so with that, you know, the PATH team comes with great experience. We build trails, so when we go out and we do field work, we look for these opportunities. We know how to take your road systems and modify those roads. If that's the only way you can make a connection. Again, a connection needs to be to desired destinations. We also, we work right alongside with developers, Long Creek Corridors. We work with major stakeholders, Georgia Powers One, we work with GDOT. You know, all of these entities we're very used to working with. So we understand what they would require. We're not here to, you know, have a master plan that's just an unrealistic, unfeasible line on a map. We also work with the railroads. Do you have, like, you are so fortunate not to have railroads. They're some of the hardest ones to work with. We also work in floodplains with FEMA and GMA parcels, being able to really capture green space. We work with large campuses and large-scale developments. So, but, you know, again, this is one of the pictures from Decatur. You know, working in a downtown urban street and being able to also work with neighborhood streets. That's kind of the tools that we have, we've learned over the years, that we also incorporate into our master plan. So with that, I appreciate your time tonight, and I'll just open it up for discussion.
Okay, let's be, go ahead, Tom.
Thank you, Greta, for the presentation. Much appreciated. As you were flipping through, I was just trying to envision how your presentation matched the city of Dunwoody. I see that your mission is to create and expand greenway trail systems. What's the definition of greenway?
Good question. So trails have different trail types. Ultimately, a greenway is your top trail type you would want to look for in an opportunity. That is separated from traffic. It really is in a green space condition. Your city doesn't have a lot of those opportunities. So we're going to have to really push our investigation of what's where to see what you have. So that is the number-one trail type. We say that when you find greenway trail opportunities, those really become linear park extensions. And that is where, if you were to look at the audience tonight, that is where, as the leadership here, seventy percent of this audience will use that trail, okay? So as you look at other trail types, you start to look at, how do we still make it inviting? How do we still make it safe? How do we get people to critical destinations where they would want to go? That's where that high use is a factor that we are looking at. You might build, we always have talked about Cobb County, building a side path along, is it Dixie Highway, I think, Pete? And it has a speed limit of like fifty-five. And nobody was going to use that, because it's just not inviting. You might have an avid person, but we're really wanting to target finding opportunities and designing trails to be able to capture a large percentage of the population's use.
Right. When it comes to the city of Dunwoody, and some of the conversations that we've been having with constituents, the locations really don't, you know, focus on a greenway-type system. We're talking twelve feet of concrete that we're trying to shoehorn into a twelve-and-a-half-foot space, leaving maybe, you know, a little space for some greenery, but really not much beauty, not much, you know. You said you wanted it to be inviting.
Right.
And I want it to be inviting as well. When we think of paths, the surveys that, you know, the city has done, they want paths, everybody wants paths, which we have beautiful greenway paths through the city, is a big Park Brook Run. Twelve feet, multi-use, trees everywhere, shade, beautiful, deer running around. That is greenway. When you say quality, you know, for everybody, I'm not sure how the single-family residential neighborhoods, how this works for them. I'm just really confused, and I'm looking forward to learning more. But I'm looking for win-win situations for not only the community in general, but for those homeowners that have the twelve-foot paths in front of their house. And how is that, you know, a greenway? And how is that inviting? And how is that beautiful? And how is that a win-win for everybody? And that's what I'm looking for, and I really haven't seen a whole lot of that yet, but I'm looking to learn more.
Right, right. Well, we're excited to help you, guide you to be able to find those opportunities.
Great, thank you.
Go ahead, John.
Hey, thanks, Greta. Like they say, if you fail a plan, you plan to fail. And we've been wanting to have that holistic, single-point viewpoint. And, you know, you want to talk about the concept of context-sensitive facilities as well, right? So we'll get into that later, about what is, we're talking about cycle tracks here on Ashford Dunwoody Hammond Drive. We're talking about greenways in Brook Run. Those are context-sensitive facilities. Some are one-use, some are multi-use, some are one-way, some are two-way. So that's all going to be a part of this process. So I look forward to engaging with you, and thank you very, very much for being here.
Thank you.
Thanks.
My question is kind of simple. So on the, it was just a, what was it called? The scope example. The cost, like ballpark. I don't know whether, I mean, you guys are a nonprofit, but surely you're going to charge us something. So ballpark, yeah, ballpark figure. You kind of know what we're asking for, ballpark figure. What are we looking at for budget-wise?
You're most likely, I need to sit down with our team. You know, as a small nonprofit, we kind of have our go-to teams that we pull in. Pete and I are not going to sit there and draw the nice graphics and produce the final document. So you're probably looking at about a hundred thousand would be the cost. And we do work really hard to control those costs for you versus, you know, what you normally would be getting is a lot more than that with a consultant who is not laser-focused on, you know, having the experience that we have every day doing this.
Thank you. I just didn't know whether it was ten thousand or ten million. I just, like, give me a ballpark.
Catherine.
I'm excited to see what you all work on. We've obviously seen your work throughout the metro area and beyond. What timeframe would you be looking at to put together a holistic trail plan that the city could embrace and move forward, support?
Yeah, we usually outline a six-to-eight-month planning process from beginning to end. That's kicking it off, all the public engagement. And, you know, also looking at, usually you're hitting some holidays, you're having some gap in the calendar. It also allows us to work with the council and the mayor, do a work session, present everything, you know, in a draft format, and then tee it up for the staff to have you adopt the plan. So you can look at about six to eight months.
Robert.
Hi, I also am very excited about this. I like the idea of improving connectivity in the city. I like the idea of kind of a comprehensive look. You've touched a little bit on public engagement. Could you expand on how you will be soliciting public feedback and public input? I think it's become very clear, you haven't been here for the last several meetings, but we've had citizens coming out every meeting, expressing concerns, both for and against trails. So it's clear that the public is something the public is very interested in, and making sure that we hear their input and incorporate that into this plan.
So what we'll do early on, when we get started, is we'll have kind of a public open house. And we'll have that set up for people to be able to come in, stand around boards, look at the city limits, be able to mark the opportunities. We also want to know where those who are attending the public engagement, where do you live? And we're going to have one-on-one dialogue. That also is going to then go to a web survey input platform for anyone who wouldn't be there. We have been doing virtual also, but, you know, there's nothing better than being in person to really engage and have conversation. So we're using those types of medias. We'll always post information through, you know, we'll work with your communications department to have your website kind of host, you know, any materials that we had in our public engagement. As we get that initial input from everyone, then we go out and we're just exploring your city. Pete's going to be crawling around under bushes, looking for, you know, what are the opportunities? We wear a yellow vest that has path on the back, so if anybody sees us, honk the horn, let's say hi. But, you know, then we come back with just some of our initial findings. Those initial findings are then presented in a more educational format to the public, which also shows them all the goals of the plan, the types of trails that are in our arsenal to be able to kind of use to make connectivity happen, and then the opportunities that we found. But during this whole process, we'll be working, you know, kind of one-on-one with city staff, with some community advocates, to be able to also have that guidance factor, because we don't ever claim to know the city as well as you do. And so we do have a core team that we would work with city staff to put together to kind of be a guiding, we'll meet more regularly with that core team.
Thanks. I'm very, like I said, I'm very excited for the plan, and I'm even more excited for the thought that we'll be able to implement it. Thank you.
Greta, thank you. And Pete, I can't see you, you're somewhere behind a pole, but thank you as well. Anyone who knows me knows that I'm excited about this opportunity too. You didn't have to get up, I was just acknowledging. But, you know, this is something that we have heard consistently from our community that is important to have a trail system. How that fits into Dunwoody is what we've been lacking, having that comprehensive plan. We've had a little, as you already talked about, so I'm not going to revisit all the observations you made perfectly. We had a little bit scattered all over, but we didn't have a comprehensive plan. And I think that's important, number one, for us, so that we can come up with a strategy for implementing it. But also, I think it's very important for the public, so that they can see our overall vision as well. Because I think doing it in segments, sometimes people don't see the big picture. And hopefully, if our residents can see the big picture, they'll have a better understanding of why we're doing it to the scale that we're doing it, and the locations that we're doing it. And hopefully, they'll better understand that. You know, John raised the point too, the great greenways versus the side paths. You know, we do have a challenge here with, we're built out pretty much. And a lot of this will be in areas that are developed. So I'm very eager to see how we can address those in creative ways, where we're respectful of the residents that live along there, but still creating an amenity that improves the neighborhood and not detracts from it. But I am excited about the opportunity to have a comprehensive plan that we can, as Rob said, start to implement. So thank you for coming out tonight.
Thank you. And so the next steps, Eric, are, what's next?
Well, the next steps, we can take a look at the, you know, the more procurement process in terms of if that's what we want to, if that's a route y'all want to go. You know, the staff is always ready to go to the next level, based on what the council would like to do on this particular thing. This is an item we've talked about for some time, in terms of what's the best method for us to get to a better, you know, planned path program for the entire city. And this is a route y'all would like to go, we can pursue this further with John Gates and the staff on this. So I'm just looking for direction from y'all. That was the reason I wanted it on the agenda tonight.
Okay, so I think you heard enthusiasm and I guess proceed that way. Anybody have any other questions? Thank y'all so much for sharing your time with us tonight.
Thank you.
Next up. Jay, are you kicking this off?
Good evening, Mayor and Council. Tonight, you have before you one item that's being asked for approval, and it's affiliated with the Cab County. It's approval of the service delivery strategy between us and them. There have been multiple questions about two specific areas. That's EMS services and sanitation, of which council has asked to have some questions answered. So DeCab has brought a great deal of staff here tonight. We have Brian Brewer from Planning and Development, who will first give you a brief overview of what is being requested by the council. The second thing, just also in the audience, we have Commissioner Robert Patrick and COO Zach Williams are here. After Brian's finished, Chief Darnell Fulham will talk a little bit about EMS service, and Director Tracy Hutchinson of Sanitation will be here with that part of it. So that's the way order will go, and Brian, unless you guys want to go first? No, Zach would like to go first. Oh, excuse me, Presiding Officer Robert Patrick would like to go first.
Thank you, Jay. Good evening, Mayor and Council. It's great to be here for you guys this evening.
I'm sorry, Commissioner Patrick, can we, I see some conversations in the back of the room. I'm sorry, if y'all could take it all the way outside. That would be helpful as we continue our agenda. Thank you.
All right.
All right.
All right, well, again.
Starting over.
Thank you, Mayor and Council. I appreciate your time this evening. I know that the topics that are going to be discussed are of importance. I've wanted to be here personally to let you know that the Order of Commissioners does take these items very seriously. And that's why we have, of course, our Chief Operating Officer Zach Williams here, as well as his department heads to help out with any of those questions. With that, I'm going to have Mr. Williams step up.
Thank you, Mr. Presiding Officer, and thank you, Madam Mayor and members of the council. This is my first opportunity to come and speak before you, and I feel as if I've neglected to come just to say hello, because I am a Dunwoody resident. And I want to commend you on the outstanding job that you guys do day in and day out. I've been in DeCab County ten years and definitely chose to locate in Dunwoody. And so thank you for what you're doing. Tonight, we have an opportunity to just share with you, and thank you for the invite, what we have been doing as it relates to our sanitation service, our fire and EMS service in particular. And Mr. Brian Brewer will talk about what the whole service delivery strategy update is all about, and why we're here before you today. But at the outset, I just want to ensure that everyone clearly understands that not only the governing authority, the CEO and Board of Commissioners, but the administration as a whole is leaning in to address the issues as it relates to EMS, as it relates to sanitation. And I'm sure you're going to hear tonight a lot of the outstanding work that our team has been undertaking to address the challenges that have been presented as a result of COVID-19. So without any further ado, I think we're going to go on and start with a setup as to why we're doing the presentation.
Can anybody hear me?
Yes, sir.
Good evening, Council and Mayor. My name is Brian Brewer. I'm with the Long Range Planning Division of the DeCab County Planning and Sustainability Department. I was here in June, and I'm back. Okay, so, of course, the purpose of the Service Delivery Strategy is to encourage city and county officials to strive for efficiency in the provision of government, identify overlaps and/or gaps, and improve the overall quality of life. We do this because of House Bill 489, the Service Delivery Strategy Law. It requires each local government to have a Department of Community Affairs verify service delivery strategy. Okay? I won't bring up the non-compliance part. But if we should find ourselves in a position of non-compliance, the county and the cities within the county would be non-eligible for state funds. Okay, so the reason we're here is that the county is embarking on a unified plan. We are combining our comprehensive land use plan and the comprehensive transportation plan. And the Department of Community Affairs considers that to be a major update to the plan. And that's noted here on this slide. So a typical SDS process and timeline begins with city government, county government, negotiate. So a typical SDS process and timeline, uh, begins with, uh, city government, county government negotiation, hopefully peer-to-peer. Second, we re, we prepare a draft, submit it and have each government review it for consistency. Once that has occurred and the cities and the county has signed off, we forward it to DCA for review. Okay, and hopefully barring any, uh, oversights or whatever, we receive a letter from the Department of Community Affairs that the service delivery strategy is verified. Okay, uh, DCA provides five forms as a part of this. Form one is essentially the cover sheet and gives a breakdown of instructions on how to prepare the document. Form two is prepared for each service. There are currently 60 in the county, between the county and the cities. Okay, form three is really about land use and any potential annexations. Form four, um, is the document that the chief executive of each government ratifies or, or signs. Form five would be filled out in the event that there was no change to the document. We try to communicate and combine the services that we provide in the county using a matrix. And these, the matrix falls under, uh, really five or six major, uh, areas of focus. That's the general services, legal, public safety, health services, as well as leisure services, public works and planning. The documents that we forwarded, um, again include the matrix. And this is a sort of screen print of the matrix document that we submit. So our next steps, um, we're still working with our county departments and, uh, coordinating with city departments and counterparts, um, in order to make sure that we have a document that everyone agrees to or agrees to inform. And hopefully we'll have any need for IGAs to be amended, approved. And finally, we'll, uh, submit in each city for resolutions. Once we have all the resolutions for the 13 cities in the county, we move forward. This is pretty much the last slide. It has my contact information on it. And that's all I got for you. Any questions?
Thank you. I'm sure we'll have questions, but maybe the rest of the presentations first. If that's okay, the council, does anybody object? Okay. Are there presentations or are we just doing question and answer presentations?
So yes, uh, yes, uh, Madam Mayor and members of the council, what we'd like to do is have Ms. Hutchinson come up. She's our Director of Sanitation and she will describe the activities, uh, that we've undertaken over the last, uh, couple of years, but in particularly over the last couple of months to really get a handle or, or make every attempt to get a handle on sanitation and recycling and yard debris. Okay.
Thank you, Zach. Good afternoon, good evening to everyone. Good to see you, Mayor, Madam Mayor and the council. It's good to be here this evening. I am Tracy Hutchinson. I'm the Director of Sanitation. And I do have with me my Assistant Director, Mr. Eric Hoston. He's actually here. He is the Director, the Assistant Director that manage all of our residential services for the county. And again, um, you know, sanitation, we're here to provide this essential services to all the residents of Dunwoody, including our other, uh, cities also. And just want to say thank you to, um, because this is a team, you know, we got all of our parties here. I want to thank the CEO and the Presiding Officer, Patrick, for being here tonight with us. And thank you for your continued support. Um, but I, but I'm here to present exactly, um, sanitation, where we're at and where we're actually going. So just a, um, Jay, do I maneuver? Okay. Great, thank you. So just a quick overview for the sanitation department. We service 170,000, low of 170,000 residents per week. And, uh, we have intergovernmental agreements with, you know, Stone Mountain, Pine Lake, Doraville and Stone Crest. And these intergovernmental agreements were committed to prior to the COVID-19 pandemic, which we're still in as a matter of fact. So our residential services is Monday through Thursday. And then, of course, the collection services, the essential services that we provide is garbage recycling and yard debris. And because the county is spread out, we have four different collection lots. We have the North Lot, which services Dunwoody and Brookhaven, Tucker, um, Doraville. And then we have the East Lot, which services back on the other side of town, uh, Stone Mountain, Stone Crest. We have a Central Lot, then we have a South Lot. Each one of those lots have designated routes. Those were the crews actually get out in the morning time when the trucks leave, they roll out. Our standard schedule is four 10-hour days. We start at seven. We, you know, we basically try to finish up by 5:30. But as a lot of you know, you have seen our trucks out there late in the evening times. We're out there in the evening time because we know that this is an essential service and we know that residents need the material picked up. So as a part of our sanitation department, we're probably one of the most comprehensive departments in the state of Georgia, because we actually have our transfer stations and we have a landfill. So we have our transfer stations that actually operate, that's, that's that building when the truck is full midday, goes out and dump, get the, get the garbage recycling off, goes back out and try to finish up the route for that day. And then at the end of the day, you know, we're processing throughout the day, we're moving that garbage to the landfill. So seminar rolls sits out, sits in, um, the cab, um, is, is our landfill that accepts all the garbage, all the garbage that has been processed for that day. And then we also have recycling. Everything that is recycled and Dunwood is our biggest, uh, the participants, the number of residents that participate in the program is actually the highest number come out of Dunwoody. Um, all of our recycling is transported to our central transfer station, which is located at the headquarters where I'm actually at, which is off Memorial Drive. All the recycling comes on the floor and we transport that recycling to Pratt. And as everybody know, the recycling program right now is basically we are, we are one of the few counties that is still, um, accepting recycling and still have a robust recycling program. So our landfill takes in about a million tons of material per year. And about 600,000 tons of that is actually buried in the landfill. Then we have about 40% that comes in that is actually beneficial reuse for the landfill. Rather we building roads, are we taking it doing, we have our compost material for our yard debris, clean dirt, anything that could be, that can be a beneficial reuse to the landfill, we basically, you know, push that aside and we use that for our landfill operations. So COVID-19. Two years into it, we still are here today. Some of us still got our mask on. And we have continued to provide the service, whether services have been delayed or behind, I'm gonna say delayed, we have continued to provide the service. We have not discontinued any services, um, for sanitation, which is a lot to be said. Um, and of course, we have been impacted by COVID-19, just like everyone else. We have had driver shortages, refuse collector shortages, um, due to COVID, and of course it still exists. So when I talk about the number of routes and, because you see our trucks coming out, a normal crew is one driver, two collectors. We would love that to roll out every day. That's not the case sometimes, because we have, you know, we got COVID issues, just various issues. So when you talk about, if we have, have one collection lot, if we have 10 to 15 employees that are out, which is sometimes normal, that could be three to five crews per day. So that's three to five routes that could be down in a day. And that's pretty much a normal process for solid waste, whether you at the county or in the private sector. Um, and of course with COVID, things change. No matter how, no one could have predicted where we're at right now. No, no business plan could have predicted this. So when residents returned home, we probably had a 30%, if not more, increase in residential garbage. And then we had a increase in recycling also. The people that weren't recycling, now I got time to go get a recycling bin. So now I want to recycle. So as opposed to three to five houses recycling, now all five houses recycling. And then, of course, it doesn't, um, when the recycling market change, the counties end up having to pay the processor to take the recycling. So sanitation, DeKalb County pays $60 a ton to transport, uh, $60 a ton to Pratt, to process our recycling, which is basically comes at our budget at a million dollars a year. But it's the right thing to do. And we have continued to push the program. We have a very robust program. Currently, right now, we probably have over 135,000 residents in the program. But also as a part of COVID, we had an increase in yard debris. We had an increase in bulky collections. All of a sudden, everybody wanted to do a home project. All of a sudden, everybody was cleaning out the garage. You know, it used to be, you see the car and they actually wasn't in the garage, everything but the car. What they were started cleaning out their garages. Then we had an increase in bulky. And then we had an increase in phone calls. We couldn't take the phone calls quick enough. The queue would be backed up. And so we average about 20,000 tons of call, 20,000 calls per year. That jumped to almost 25,000 calls, I mean, 25,000 calls in a month, which equated about 300,000 calls per year. So it was just, you know, and the emails, it was either emails or phone calls. I personally answer a lot of emails myself. My Assistant Director answer emails. Commissioner, our Presiding Officer answer emails. Our CEO offer emails. The emails were going everywhere. And we are, and as, uh, hopefully everyone here would be able to say sanitation is very responsive. I take a lot of pride as Director and being very responsive to any resident or any elected official to actually email my office or email sanitation. We take a lot of pride in being very responsive. As a part of that, we increased our, okay, how do we all get the phone calls answered? So we're looking at different technologies that are available, so we could, so we could answer the phone call. We want to provide, we are here to provide good customer service. So with that being said, how do we get everything up? So we extended the work hours, which is why you see us out there sometimes at late at night. And some residents actually say, but my God, are y'all still out here working at eight o'clock at night? Yes, we are. It's just simple. Yes, we are. We trying to get material up. We, we extended, because our, because our schedule is Monday through Thursday. For months now, we have been working Fridays and Saturdays, trying to get material up. Because we understand that you guys, residents, want the material. This is an essential service. Garbage is our priority though. We cannot let the garbage stay at the curb. That's our priority. Garbage is first, recycling, then yard debris. So with the emails and the phone calls, thankfully, we continue to have the support from our CEO, Michael Thurman, and our CEO Zach Williams. We were approved additional staff to answer the calls. So thank, thank, thankfully, I mean, that was no issue. And then, like I said, we're still evaluating some software that's available where you can call in. I think everybody's probably experienced that you call in, you identify your name or telephone number and a, a call, a call you back and said, if you're Tracy Hutchinson, press one. So we're looking at that technology right now. Also looking at doing additional drivers and collectors, because, because we want to be sure that the staff that we got, you know, that we're working them, but we want to be sure that, that, that is a balance for everyone. And with that being said, we actually had a hiring event on July 15th, where we actually came to the community at our North Lot. We want to come to the community and try to recruit residents or candidates that was interested in working for sanitation, because we have a good career path. Um, so we came there and we had a onsite hiring event, but we actually did 51 employ, we actually had offers. HR was with us. We offered 51 people a job that day on the spot. So we're very proud of that event. And we have had three new higher classes. Matter of fact, we have one today. So we're processing the candidates and getting them in as quickly as we can. My Assistant Director, he has instituted some onsite training, because when you come in, there is a lot to learn. Where am I going? What's my route? Um, who's back door? So there is a lot of training that needs to happen. So we've instituted some in-house training that we're in the process of, um, rolling out and it's going great so far. Then also with the continued support of CEO Thurman, our CEO, Zach Williams and the Board of Commissioners, we're looking at compensation for our CDL drivers. I mean, that is, you know, right now, if you look at the news, you look at everything, it's just, you gotta look at the compensation also. So we're looking at that also. And then, of course, in the infants, like in the case where we may have a driver that is out, got another driver come in, how do you know you're out? So we want to be sure that we're looking at technol- technology that's available. So we're looking at installing tablets on all the trucks. Kind of like you got the Siri, but you got the Siri in the truck with you. That's gonna, you got your route, it's gonna tell you turn by turn as to where to go. Also, one of the things that I'm really happy to report, again, with the support of CEO Michael Thurman, Zach, the Commissioners, we went out and we started beating the streets. What can we do to get through this wave of trying to get some of this material picked up? Myself and my Assistant Director, we looked at every strategy we could think of and we was like, you know, we, we need to try to get some type of help in to assist us. So we augmented the stat, so we brought in a landscaping company right now. It's called, they're Russell Landscaping. We have a 12-month contract with them that began the last week of June. They're servicing, um, five routes, Monday through Thursday. The routes include Dunwoody, Brookhaven, Tucker and Doraville. To date, we have been, you know, communicating with them every day. For, since June, we have been having a weekly meeting with them. We go over what they send in the field, how's it going? We make sure that we all communicating. We have a group text message. We communicate with each other every day. We also had to train them on what is compliance piles and what is non-compliance piles, because it's not everything is compliance piles. So we had to train them. We had to give them some information and say, how do you leave this information for the resident? If the pile is not picked up, the resident want to know why, which is going to generate an email or a phone call to someone. And so we had to train them also, but things are going quite well so far. It's been an excellent decision. And then our CDL drivers that we have, you know, we have just pushed those drivers again to focus on our garbage, which is our priority. That is a DeKalb County sanitation priority, is make sure that garbage is picked up. And the daily communications from Russell has been great. So, um, so far, so good. And that's a one-year, that is a 12-month commitment. One of the other things we looked at, well, okay, we right here, we, it's difficult to hire a CDL driver. Right now, you had a CDL driver's license in your pocket right now, you worked a lot of money right now. You, I mean, you're a great commodity. That, and if you know how to operate diesel engines and stuff, I'm, our fleet department need mechanics. So it's just a, but at the end of the day, what do we do? So myself and my Assistant Director, I work to extremely late sometimes, seven, eight o'clock in the evening time, just, okay, we got to figure something out. So there is a two-year wait on a garbage truck right now, maybe two and a half years. If you put in an order right now, you wouldn't get a truck for another two and a half years. So we need to get some trucks sent, but I need to be able to get these trucks rolling. We started beating the streets, started making phone call, after phone call, the phone call. Okay, how about some non-CDL trucks? We called state of Georgia, what is the limit? What is that weight limit for a non-CDL versus CDL? We were able to get with the contractor, we found six trucks. I really didn't even have a P O number in my hand, but I was like, send them to the cab. I'm telling myself now. Send them to the cab. We need them. Now that's what we did. So we got those trucks sent. And I knew 100% that I was going to have the support for CEO Thurman and Zach and the, and the Commissioners. So I knew that. So I felt very comfortable in making that decision as Director. So we were able to get these trucks sent and I did a 12-month contract for that also. This wave that we're going through is not going to be next week. And this is essential services that we need to provide to the residents of the county. But we're focusing on the Dunwoody primarily, the highest participant of recycling that we have. We got to get the recycling up. So we dedicated these trucks 100% to the city of Dunwoody. Dunwoody, Brookhaven and Tucker, this whole area. So what we have done is we basically taken our non-CDL drivers, sanitation employees, refuse collectors, train them. We, we have something, it's something, it's, it's almost similar to like defensive driving. We call it pace, pace training, pace behavior training. Brought them inside, ran the driver's license, of course, want to make sure you're not a liability too. Got to be smart about it. And trained them, took them outside, do a pre-trip and a post-trip on the truck. How do you operate the truck? Um, how do you dump the truck? Anything you could think of, just crawling around that truck to make sure everybody got a clear understanding. Two refuse collectors assigned to the truck, basically taking turns, because Two refuse collectors assigned to the truck, basically taking turns because this truck, you got, you're not only driving the truck, but you got to pick up the recycling bins at the same time. So you're basically collecting and driving the truck to get a route up in one day. So with that being said, we communicate with these employees, with our refuse collectors, basically daily. And we're keeping tabs on how's it going? So far, great. And so as we got a total of five, we got a total of five, uh, trucks that we've dedicated. It, it is a total of six trucks that we have. The sixth truck, we, we still use it, but we, we, you know, we got to have one as a spear. If one go down, we still got to get that route picked up. So you always got to have one truck back down as a spear, but we run that truck on as needed basis, what we call for escalations. We had escalation from the mirror. We had escalation for CEO Thurman. We had escalation for Zach Office. So we just tried to push forward with that. Um, so we got trucks rolling. Three hundred plus trucks a day, running is, running throughout the county all day. Um, so who's out there checking behind the routes to make sure that the routes are clean, that everything's picked up? Did you say Mr. Presiding Officer Patrick? He's out there a lot. Um, so one of our tasks is, how do you verify it? I mean, we have had meetings with our CEO and Zach, I mean, evenings, weekends, Sundays, a lot is going into sanitation. A lot, so we have a lot of support. Um, why don't we take some of our employees and make, you know, because our drivers now, our supervisor and our general informants, basically, we need every CDL driver to get in a truck. All hands on deck, just a simple way to say it. So we decided to dedicate some employees to go behind even Russell. Even though we paying Russell, still got to check behind him. So they're checking every route, primarily in the Dunwood, that's, that's sponsored for the North Lot, yard debris recycling garbage. And so that's coming back to us every day. We run kind of one day behind. So, so on like Monday, to, tomorrow, Tuesday, we do Monday. We keep going. Wednesday, we doing Tuesday. So these employees work Monday through Friday. And then that upcoming weekend, which I know a lot of you see us out there, that's when we come behind and we'll pick that up. So our focus on is trying to get it picked up. And then I really like to talk about, a little bit about the commercial services, because commercial services is another part of the services that, that we actually do. And the restaurants and businesses, they pay for commercial services. We're there to provide that service also. One of the things that we did again, when we looked at our shortage of drivers, we had to optimize the routes. Which means we had the, that driver may have had to take on instead of one route, maybe they got one point five routes now, or up to two routes now. Because it's just, we got to get the service done. And so we have, um, combined some of our routes, so our drivers, ours, our commercial department start at five-thirty and they get off at two. Of course, their hours have been extended also because we got to combine the routes. And then what we have found is that commercial truck is such a high skill set that you may could get a driver in, but you may not can get a driver in and know how to pull in, back up, pull in, back up, dump that container, because you know, the container will fall inside the hopper of the truck. And you got to get the container out the truck. So we have instituted a in-house training program for those CDL drivers. So we want to make sure that when you go out there, that you're actually successful and actually getting that route picked up. What we have seen in the commercial department, a significant reduction in misses over the past, um, months. Um, we are not getting that many complaints, no, nowhere nearly the many complaints that we used to get in commercial. So I would just want to commend that staff, everything that they're doing to, um, make sure that we're providing that service. So staff retention, you could say like, well, what exactly is DeKalb County doing to retain their staff? So, you know, our staff is basically our most valuable assets. And so we really want to show that, you know, those employees have done a awesome job throughout the pandemic and still doing an awesome job now. And our CEO was one of the, I want to say the first that implemented the frontline hazard pay. And then, of course, we've, he's, um, the BLC and, uh, he's recommended the BLC has improved retention bonuses. And then in the COVID, throughout the whole COVID program, the, the years that we've been dealing with COVID, I, as director, instituted GED program. I have a lot of my employees that do not have a GED and they basically, their career has basically, it would basically stop at a certain point. But these are long-term employees that need to go to that next level. And so in instituting that program, we have had folks to employees that have, um, obtained a GED with Georgia Piedmont and actually have been promoted to supervisors' positions. So just want to congratulate them on the great job they have done. And then we also do employee recognition. We have employee of the month, employee of the quarter, special recognition throughout our newsletter. And then we also recognize our employees internally for any, we get a lot of accolades from a lot of residents that'll say, thank you. This morning, I got one from a ninety-year-old woman that said, I just want to call you and say, thank you. I'm like, thank you so much, because sometimes my day just started off just everywhere. So when I paused for a minute to take the phone call, it was a great phone call. And her name was Ms. Sarah King, and she said, I just want to call you, Ms. Hutcherson, because I know you guys get a lot of negative, but I want to give you something positive. I said, thank you so much for that phone call. So as I stand here today to talk about sanitation and all the efforts and the milestones that we have met, we are continuously, you know, looking at what else can be done to make sure that we continue to provide this essential services for the residents. Um, and it's, so I, that's the end of my, I'm talking really fast, because I know you got another presentation also. So, um, but again, um, I'm here, I'm always here. I've been working in sanitation for eighteen years, um, but prior to this, I worked at Waste Management for ten years. So I've been doing solid waste for twenty-eight years, been my whole career. Um, and my assistant director, he actually started as a refuse collector. And so he's now my assistant director and he's been doing sanitation for twenty years.
Thank you. We'll do questions if it's okay with council.
Absolutely.
At the end, there's one more presentation from Chief Fulham, I believe.
Yes, okay.
Thank you very much.
Absolutely.
You said it's going to come up automatically.
Yeah, they're going to put it on in the back.
Good evening, Mayor, and to the council. It's good to be before you again.
Could you just introduce yourself for the audience?
Yes, Darnell Fulham, uh, Fire Chief, DeKalb County Fire Rescue.
Thank you, Chief Fulham. Ginger, do you know, is Ginger putting it on?
Yes, she is.
Okay, there she goes. All right.
And I should have brought my glasses. There we go. I would just take a little bit of time and just tell you, uh, about your, your fire department. I know we're going to speak about, uh, not only the fire department, but EMS. Um, currently, we have eight hundred and twenty-four positions for the fire department. Uh, we're very proud that thirty of those individuals, uh, we received through a grant, uh, through a safer grant, which gave us five point eight million dollars. Uh, that funds the firefighters for three years. Uh, no cost, uh, to the county. So we're very proud of that. And we're also very proud of the fact that we do have an ISO rating of two. Uh, you may be familiar with the ISO ratings, uh, it's one through ten, one being the best. Uh, but we are in the top three percent of all fire departments across the nation uh, as it relates to having a two, and it's especially important for a department of our size, uh, many of those departments that do have a one or a two are much smaller and run, uh, much less calls than we do. Uh, we run about a hundred thousand calls a year. That's what we did in, uh, twenty-twenty-one. Uh, making us the busiest department, uh, in the state. Uh, that's something we worked to reduce. It's not a number that we're proud of in a sense of, uh, why we have to go on those calls, but we're working to reduce that number. Uh, as far as Dunn was, Dunwoodie's concerned, uh, we respond to close to four thousand calls in twenty-twenty-one, which was four percent of, uh, our, our overall, um, our overall call volume. As far as the units in Dunwoody, and let me start off by saying it's very important, and I'm going to illustrate this, uh, by some of the major calls that we had, uh, here in Dunwoody. But though we do have three stations, it's important to realize, uh, on any given day, approximately a hundred and forty, uh, firefighters are on duty. Any of those could end up in the city of Dunwoody based upon, uh, the call. But we do have the three stations here, Station Twelve, Station Eighteen, Station Twenty-One, which you're familiar with. Um, I have here outlined the equipment that's at each one of those stations. Uh, the personnel that you're seeing, that's the total assignment. Uh, the crews work a twenty-four-hour shift and then they're off for forty-eight hours. So in essence, you can buy that by three. That's what's probably on duty, uh, today. Um, Station Twenty-One, uh, you may recall, we, we, uh, um, augmented that service. Uh, it used to be one piece of equipment that was at that station. Now there's three. There's an engine, a truck and a squad. Uh, you see here also the AMR units. Um, though we show the assignments of two personnel, they work a different schedule. They work a twelve-hour shift. Uh, so today there would be, uh, twelve hours and then a different crew would come on for the last twelve hours. Uh, but there is a ALS unit assigned to each one of those, uh, stations, uh, at least at the point when the, the day starts. Uh, and then as we'll talk about, you know, as calls come in, those units may move around. So just to give you a perspective of the call volume, I'm going to speak, uh, about, uh, the fire rescue portion and then I'll speak about AMR. So this, these numbers that you're seeing before you, uh, this shows just a three-year snapshot of the responses by DeKalb County Fire uh, in Dunwoody. It includes all types of calls. Uh, it's important to note, and, uh, I think we were all prepared in twenty-twenty as the pandemic, uh, kicked off. We expected this huge increase in call volume. Uh, we didn't know what exactly the pandemic was going to mean to us, uh, but we thought, as many folks did, uh, that you would have, uh, a vast more, uh, calls, EMS calls as people became sick. Actually, we saw just the opposite. As, uh, folks were working from home, uh, the call volume actually went down for EMS. Uh, folks were, were, uh, concerned about going to the hospital. Uh, but we did see an increase in our fire calls at that time because once again, folks were at home. Uh, you can see in twenty-twenty-one, we saw a, a rebound, uh, if not a significant increase as folks were, uh, going back to work and were more apt to, to go to the hospital as well. Our call volume as far as fires has still stayed up, uh, relatively high. And then you see this number of, uh, two thousand two hundred and fourteen. Uh, it's probably a little higher now. We, we had set up this, uh, uh, PowerPoint a few days ago, but that shows what, uh, where we are, uh, today. So just to break it down a little further, uh, once again, this is, uh, DeKalb County Fire only, the fire portion uh, responded to twenty-six hundred, uh, EMS responses in twenty-twenty-one. Uh, this is a further breakdown. You'll see the structure fires that we had in the city of Dunwoody was twelve. Uh, non-structure fires, which could be car fires, grass fires, anything other than a, a building. Uh, we responded to fifty-six. Uh, there was eighty hazmat calls, uh, in the city of Dunwoody. Uh, fifty-five technical rescue responses and, and those can be, uh, everything from confined space, high-rise, um, um, entrapments, those type of calls. And then another large area, this one thousand eight hundred and thirty-four calls, other responses. Uh, oftentimes, we are going to be the ones who respond when nobody else, or they don't know who else is sent. So that could be for anything. That could be for, uh, a water leak, that could be for just a general health call. But if, uh, once again, someone dials nine-one-one, and I often say they're not sure which bracket to put in, more than likely, we're going to respond. And that ends up being a lot of our call volume. So I'll speak very quickly about the two notable responses that, uh, you all may recall. Uh, Mayor, I had the opportunity to meet you on both of these, uh, incidents. Uh, but we did have to, the two explosions. And both of those incidents, uh, those ended up being, uh, long-term, very complex responses. Uh, the September twelfth, two thousand twenty-one was the arrive Dunwoody, uh, apartments. Uh, we ended up with, uh, fifty-one firefighters on that scene. Uh, it, once again, very complex situation. Uh, thank goodness, we didn't have, uh, any, uh, loss of life. Uh, but there was nineteen units on that location, uh, that ended up, uh, having to deal with a situation, not much fire. Uh, but, uh, we had to have a lot of, uh, resources there. The December twenty-first, uh, twenty-twenty, the explosion at the Dunwoody Village Apartments. Uh, we ended up with sixty firefighters, uh, on that location, twenty-four units. Uh, it was a very unique situation because, uh, in order to get enough water, we ended up having to lay hose all the way back out to the main road. And so, uh, once again, very complex situation, but we were able to, to handle it uh, with the firefighters that we had, which ended up coming from, uh, far south in order to, to make sure that we could, uh, properly handle the call. So speaking about, uh, AMR, I'll speak about, uh, their numbers. Uh, first of all, you're seeing once again a snapshot across three years of, of, uh, calls. You will notice that, uh, the little, the smaller, uh, uh, bar is those responses to, uh, Dunwoody. And you may notice that they're a little different than what you would have saw with, um, DeKalb County Fire Rescue. There are calls that they respond to, that we don't respond to. Uh, it may be, uh, what we would call low-acuity calls, where there's not a need for a fire unit to respond and they may respond themselves. In some cases, they, uh, are able to get on scene first, uh, and then cancel the fire unit. Sometimes it works just the opposite. The fire unit's able to get on the scene and if that patient decides either they do not want to go by ambulance or do not need an ambulance, then we're able to cancel the ambulance. So, uh, but you can also see the call volume, uh, that they do overall, uh, throughout the county. Uh, it's important note, uh, as well, that fire rescue, uh, we have services, we provide services to all of DeKalb County except for the city of Decatur and the portion of the city of Atlanta that's in Deca, uh, in DeKalb County, City of Atlanta, fire provides service there. However, when it comes to ambulance service, AMR provides service, uh, for the whole footprint of, um, DeKalb County. So once again, this is just looking at it from a different angle. Uh, once again, you'll see that in twenty-twenty, we saw that decrease uh, uh, in, in EMS calls. Once again, they usually go up each year, fire usually goes down. Uh, but we did see that, that little drop and then it just rebounded, uh, in twenty-twenty-one. And we're still seeing in some ways, uh, those high numbers in twenty-twenty-two. So here, uh, this, uh, graph here, it sort of demonstrates what happens in the system as far as AMR. Uh, the way that they look at their, um, uh, uh, units in the system is by hour. So how many hours means, and once again, uh, for every hour, uh, would be one ambulance in service. So you're seeing here, uh, how they were progressing, uh, with their, uh, unit hours. And then you see the bump in July and you'll probably see that, uh, as I speak about some of the changes that they made, they were able to increase their numbers of, uh, uh, ambulances on the road, uh, based on the challenges they were facing. So just, uh, once again, a graph here that kind of shows the, the, uh, the average response times. Uh, you can see our response, it's, it's, uh, fire in red and, and, uh, AMR is in blue. You can see a decrease in, in our, uh, responses is from, from the, uh, fire rescue. You are seeing an increase in the AMR. Uh, we do know that that's occurring and you're, we're going to talk about, uh, some of the reasons why and some of the solutions, we believe we'll address that. So I'm going to talk about some of the healthcare challenges and this is not just the cabs, not just, um, uh, our region. Uh, I'm sure you've seen the news stories. This is definitely something that we're seeing nationwide. Uh, staffing shortages nationwide. Uh, the, the decrease in, in individuals going into this type of work as far as paramedics and EMTs, uh, has been extreme. Um, I'll just speak on a personal note. I was out in, in New Mexico at a conference with other fire chiefs and this was number one on everybody's discussion about the shortages we're seeing, uh, once again, with, uh, people who are deciding to enter this, this field of work, whether it's firefighter, I'm sure, police officers, I saw your, your police officers you were bringing on board. But, uh, in any of the public safety arenas, you're seeing decreases in the number of folks who are attracted to this, uh, business. Uh, we also are, what's happening as a consequence- We also are, what's happening as a consequence of that, that we're all really fighting for the same labor force. Um, as I speak later about some of the uh, um, how we're meeting those challenges through opportunities, we're really in many ways, just, just trying to, to harvest the same employees from other places. Or, but what's happening and what needs to happen is that we start creating more of our own, and that's something that we're doing. The wall time issue, and I talked about this, I believe at the last meeting, we call it wall time, but let me just very quick, quickly explain what that is. So when an ambulance picks up a patient, they obviously have to travel to the hospital, in most cases, it's gonna be the hospital of that patient's choice. Uh, that is uh a part of the state's rules, they do get to choose as long as they're competent. And uh, there's not an emergency that would dictate they go somewhere else. So they usually go to the hospital of their choice. But once they get to that hospital, what we're finding in many cases is that that patient cannot be offloaded. Uh, given over to the hospital staff because of shortages of their own. Uh, there was a time, it was bed space, especially at the, when there were spikes in COVID, there just wasn't the beds. But now it's more than likely due to shortages at the hospital, just not enough staff. That patient then stays on the ambulance, inside the ambulance, or is at least on the, the stretcher and still being cared for by the ambulance crew until they are properly uh turned over to the hospital. We call that wall time because it used to move the stretcher to the wall, and that's what it, what it was called. You're gonna see and, and demonstrated how that number has total, uh, has been going up over time and how that has its impact. The other area that I'll just speak to is uh what we've been seeing for a long time in the EMS service, but just the over-reliance on uh the EMS system, and really, this is important, but for non-emergency calls. So traditionally, those may have been the ones where somebody would have went to their, to their own doctor or set up an appointment. Uh, but what we're seeing is a lot of those calls are finding them way, finding their way, those patients are finding their way into the system where nine-one-one is called. We respond, then we are transporting that patient. Here's how it's further complicated, that individual is a low priority when they get to the hospital. So that person is not going to find themselves, once again, being entered into the hospital if there's other patients before them uh that have um more serious um uh ailments that need to be taken care of. What I'd like to do, um, I have the pleasure really of introducing Dr. Carr, Michael Carr, who is our medical director. Uh, Dr. Carr came on with us at the beginning of twenty twenty. And uh, so you can imagine uh, uh, what he had to, to jump into. But he's just been a uh extremely uh resourceful person for us as, as it relates to how we prepared for COVID. Uh, I'll let him speak about his uh, his career, but he does work in the uh emergency setting. So we get a great feedback from him as it relates to what's happening in the hospital. Dr. Carr?
Hello, everyone. Thanks for the opportunity to come up here and, and speak to you. My name's Michael Carr. Um, I work as an emergency physician, so I'm board certified in emergency medicine and in EMS and disaster medicine. And I'm also in that role, uh, medical director for DeKalb County. And to answer the question, you're all thinking, yes, I'm old enough to be a doctor. Um, so uh, as Chief Fulham said, I've, I've been in this role since uh February twenty twenty, it's, it's been quite a ride. Um, I'd like to reiterate the landscape of EMS, uh, it's not just a local problem, it is a national problem. Uh, meaning um, uh, the multi, multifaceted, um, in addition to human resources and, and staffing, um, the emergency and acute care services are, are overwhelmed. Um, and really, we've, we've have a disconnect between uh available resources and, and utilization. So, um, again, just to, just to reiterate, um, this is something we're seeing uh nationwide. Uh, I'd like to just comment on a, a few uh pillars, if you will, that we've uh, we've kind of made goals to address this, this issue. Um, we put together a committee uh called uh LoReams, forgive the acronym, but the long-term optimization of resources and efficiency in EMS. Um, I hate to take credit for the acronym, but it's mine, it's terrible, I know. Uh, but we um, uh, in this committee have representatives from EMS, from fire, from hospitals, um, where we can all bring something to the, the table to discuss uh optimization of resources. The first pillar uh that I'd like to point out is uh, uh, Emergency Medicine Dispatch, so EMD. Basically, when you call nine-one-one, um, there's a algorithm that call takers go through to ask you very specific questions to kind of uh get to the bottom of the seriousness or the acuity of your illness. Um, that's uh, the system that we use in DeKalb County is called Priority Dispatch, and that's the most validated international uh protocol system that's available. Um, in addition to this uh, this automated triage process, uh, we have resources available, actually through cooperation with AMR, where uh we can uh tap into a nurse navigation line. So if you call nine-one-one, and we did, need to get a little bit more information about the nature of your emergency and um how to best use resources that are available, we uh connect the patient with a nurse navigator, who will kind of walk through the nature of the illness. And um oftentimes, we'll say, okay, yes, you really need to go to the hospital, so we'll dispatch an ambulance. Um, we also have alternative destinations available, uh, meaning uh the nurse navigator can coordinate a ride uh via Lyft to an urgent care or to uh assist the patient with uh setting up a primary care appointment. So, uh, this is one way that has been really successful in um uh optimizing the use of resources. The second pillar is uh field, uh, field triage protocols. So now when an EMS agency or an EMS worker responds to a, a nine-one-one call, and they determine it may not be a time-critical or severe illness, we can get a better triage by referring those patients into the nurse navigation line, get more information and see if they're a candidate to go to an alternate destination other than the emergency room. Um, the third pillar, uh, which, uh, you know, we, we're kind of uh establishing uh its importance in the, in the community, if you will, is something called mobile integrated healthcare. Um, mobile integrated healthcare systems uh are, are hospital-based systems that work with EMS to outreach to high utilizers. Uh, people who have a, a serious illness that might require them to use acute care services a lot more frequently. We can be proactive with uh going out and meeting them, uh, these are, these are patients with um high resource uh utilization for issues like mental health, uh congestive heart failure, people who tend to use the hospital system uh more than the baseline population. So working with local hospital systems to target those, we've already started working with, with Grady. Um, the ACT team uh is a mental health, uh, a mobile integrated health system that can go out and see a patient immediately um a- as soon as they uh are present with an illness. Um, you know, uh, similarly, trying to model after these mobile integrated health systems, we're in communication with uh other hospital systems like Emory in DeKalb County to uh, to tap into this, this uh much-needed resource. The, the uh, the last pillar, and Chief Fulham uh touched on this a little bit, uh, the fourth uh goal or target area for optimizing resources is something called APod, ambulance patient offload delay. And uh, speaking as an emergency physician, this is, this is a, a major contributor and a major root of a lot of the issues we're seeing in EMS. In addition to staffing issues, we're also seeing um a- available ambulances being held at the hospital. And um, this is uh, you know, you know, let's face it, this is uh really a, a hospital flow problem, right? Um, when you look at the law, the law would say, you know, the hospital is responsible for that patient, even if they're on the EMS stretcher. So a lot of what, what I do and a lot of what um leadership in the county's doing is uh communicating and working with hospitals to uh develop policies to get patients to flow through the emergency departments a little bit better. Uh, for example, um, immediate, immediate offload of that patient upon arrival by bringing them right to, right to triage, just as if you were to check into uh the ER as a patient and you're immediately triaged. Uh, we'd like those ambulance patients to be immediately triaged if, if we can do that. Certainly, there is a higher percentage of patients who are critically ill and need immediate services or require ongoing monitoring and treatment. So those are, those are the patients who are tending to hold the wall a lot more, if you will. Uh, so those, you know, um, those are the main pillars of, of our, our targeted approach. And, and really, it's, it's a multifaceted approach, and there are a lot of, there are a lot of players at the table, right? So having con- conversations with hospital systems, with EMS, with fire, um, with doctors, with medical directors, um, it's, it's, it's ongoing. And uh, leadership in the county, I mean, I can, I can attest, work tirelessly. Um, Chief Fulham's getting texts at all hours of the night about uh, 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 the response and the current landscape and, and situations that are happening in the county. So, um, thanks, thanks again for the opportunity to speak, and uh, I'm happy to hang around and answer any questions.
Thank you, Dr. Carr. So just very quickly, I, I wanted to show this graph, and it shows what we're seeing in the system. We, we actually uh keep up with the wall time that I was speaking to. And this is just a short graph that shows over a twelve-month pe- uh, twelve-month period, uh, the average. And you can see here that it's been hovering right around fifty minutes. Um, and that, once again, this is the time that it's taking, once the ambulance gets to the hospital, for them to actually offload a, a patient. Just some of the investments that AMR has, has done, we talked about this, I think I talked about it last time I was here, it may have not had opened at the time, but the Brookhaven uh EMS uh Deployment Center, uh, that's on Beaufort Highway. Uh, the reason that we needed that was because the amulets were traveling back to their headquarters, if you will, that was in Stone Mountain, which meant that there was that delay or, or just that distance that they had to travel, change crews, change equipment, and then get back to what you would consider to be their home territory. Having this location now allows for those units uh to travel less distance um and make those, those changes. Dr. Carr talked extensively about the, the nurse navigation system, I actually have another slide, I'll, I'll go through that one for uh sake of time. Um, the quick response vehicles, I talked about our quick response vehicles uh that we have in service, but AMR has the same thing now.
Actually, I don't think you mentioned the, the quick response vehicles, did you?
Probably, not today, but
No, in the past.
Yes, yes, but I can speak very uh quickly about them, we're very proud of this, this was a uh, a SPOLOSS uh-supported uh program. There's ten of these smaller vehicles that you may see riding around, there is one up here in Dunwoody uh that has a crew of two, it says quick response on the side. Um, that crew, in many cases, is the one that will respond to EMS calls. Uh, that doesn't need a larger crew, doesn't need a larger uh, uh assortment of equipment, and they can handle that call. They can even uh respond to small fires. If it was something like a car fire, they have a system on there that they could handle uh that small fire, grass fire, or something like that. Uh, so it's just uh, once again, adding to our, our uh resources. Once again, there's ten of those around the county um that was funded through uh SPOLOSS. So what uh AMR did, uh, I would like to say that they actually just kind of modeled our idea and uh set up their own quick response vehicles that has a paramedic on them. Uh, single paramedic, and that paramedic will respond to calls uh that they seem uh or deem appropriate. And then they can start care, once again, uh initiate care until the ambulance or maybe the fire unit gets there. Many cases, they may be able to uh mitigate that situation where the patient doesn't really need to go to the hospital. Sometimes it's simply uh having somebody come, do those initial vitals, uh, maybe give uh some encouragement. Still, uh, they can make that decision if they want the ambulance to come, but sometimes that is just enough uh for that person to then feel as though they don't need to go by uh, by ambulance. Uh, the air uh ambulance services, we don't use this as much in this area, but uh it is something that we have used actually twice this year. And that is when we have a major uh incident, especially let's say like a car wreck. Uh, if there was a car wreck out on uh two-eighty-five, there may be an entrapment, it's gonna take a while to free that patient. Uh, we can actually call for a uh air vac, an ambulance or a uh helicopter that can come. We can set up the, the LZ, grab that patient and get them to the hospital much quicker, and that's the service that AMR is providing. So, once again, I'll just, just point out a few of these highlights, uh, Dr. Carr spoke about the nurse navigation system that to be uh, that was uh, came on board in twenty twenty. Um, we've seen uh so far that about eight thousand ambulance dispatches were saved, meaning that as he spoke about uh, that person who called nine-one-one was routed to the nurse nav. Interestingly enough, in many cases, it doesn't require a uh transport to be, excuse me, a uh, a doctor's appointment to be set up. These patients, in some cases, after speaking to the nurse, decide that they don't wanna go to the hospital once again. Uh, maybe set up the doctor's appointment on their own. But if they decided they wanted to have an appointment, the nurse nav uh can help them in setting up the appointment and also even transportation uh at no cost to them. The Earn to Learn Program, this is where I talked a little bit earlier about the fact that we're all really just trying to grab the same uh small uh pot of employees or paramedics or EMTs that are out there. Uh, AMR started an Earn to Learn Program, I think I mentioned this during the last time I was here, but they have graduated at this point uh thirty uh three graduates. As I recall from the graduations, most of those individuals are from the cabs, so it is deploying to cab citizens. Uh, th- those individuals are working in the cab, I always make sure of that at the graduation. Uh, it's also gonna be another uh opportunity for us to look at increasing our uh numbers of paramedics as well. All of our firefighters are EMTs or paramedics, you have to be either EMT or paramedic to be a, a DeKalb County firefighter. Uh, so uh, being able to um, um, augment their education by them becoming paramedics is something that we're attempting uh to do. So with that being said, that's the end of my presentation, and I will stand back and for questions.
So is the gentleman from AMR not saying anything? Or is he just here to answer a question? Isn't, is there somebody here from AMR or not?
Yes, ma'am, he's here to take notes.
Okay.
And so, as anything that comes about, yes.
Not answer questions. So, if it's okay with council, I'll start. So, Ms. Hatterson, thank you for your presentation on sanitation. Um, communication is key, I think setting expectations, letting people know about the Friday and Saturday solution. Commissioner Patrick and I have talked repeatedly about using technology so people can just push a button or something, a text, and let people know that their street was missed, would be very helpful. I certainly appreciate the effort of your department, the people on the trucks. Um, it goes without saying that that's really hard work. I'd like to throw out the possibility, and this is just me, council hasn't s- supported this, or we've not talked about it, the idea that we should streamline some services by having rules like some of the private sanitation companies have. I think we ought to require everything to be in a can for garbage. I think that would be the, because if you're, we invested in all those trucks to save people's backs and to keep uh workers' comp claims down. And my, when we look at, I thought that was the rule, and then when we looked at the rules here, it doesn't come across that way. But I think that there's no reason in twenty twenty-two that we should be taking up extra bags. People can get bigger cans, right? And they can actually get a second can, I believe, if they're recycling. Go ahead.
That is correct, Mayor. So if you have a ninety-five gallon roll cart, as you know, we rolled out of what we call our fully automated um trash trucks. And the purpose of that truck is for that driver to pick up the truck, pick up that container and dump it into that truck. Um, not for the driver to get in, to get in and out to get those excess bags. So anything outside those ninety-five gallon roll carts should be left. And uh residents can request a second roll cart, that's really easy. You request a second roll cart from sanitation, and then you pay a pro-rated service fee for the months that you're actually gonna receive the service. That following year, your annual sanitation fee is adjusted for that second roll cart, it actually increases. But residents can get a second roll cart.
So, I, and we're this tonight off uh another time, but when we went to share information from the sanitation department, either we were looking in the wrong place or it did not reflect the no extra bags. So just to be clear, we need to be clear on the rules because I don't want, uh, I want there to be clear communication that sorry, so, sorry, since I pushed the button. So I, so I think communication is really key, so that. And I think we ought to, in order to maintain the level of service, we need to straight, we need to have the rules, and we need to enforce the rules. And I, and I think it would be helpful, you talked about um the contractor needing to let people know why their yard waste wasn't picked up. Is that a note, or is that just for y'all to know?
So what we have is, we actually have, um, but in regards to the ninety-five gallon carts, I will speak with my public relations manager. So what we have is we actually have, but in regards to the 95 gallon parts, I will speak with my public relations manager, Ms. Pauline Andrea. I'll speak to her to make sure that website is up to date. We do take a lot of pride in making sure the website is up to date. But we, what we have is we have was called door hangers. You get a door hanger left at your house to letting you know that your pile is not in compliance. And then after that, what you also get is called a special collections authorization form. It's a SCAP. Get a door hanger that basically, and we use graphics. So just in case you'll be like, okay, what's wrong? And then we'll let you know that the pile was not properly prepared. It was a co-mingle pile. Excess garbage, excess garbage is not picked up, excess garbage is on here. Unapproved containers. We only service the CAB County residents' containers, I mean, the CAB County containers. And then, of course, we have a lot of tree contractors that tell residents, oh, it's okay, leave it to the curb. We cut the tree up. To CAB County, come pick it up. We'll pick it up for feet. We don't pick up the trees for just to, you know, because there's a totally separate truck that picks it up. And then you have a SCAP and the SCAP provides you with the dollar amount. We actually go out there, we review the pile and we provide you the discretion of how to pay. Once the resident pay for the pile, we have a separate set of trucks, not the normal rail loaders that come into your neighborhood. It's a totally separate trucks. They work five days a week on going to pick up what we call special collections pay piles. So once the resident pay, our service delivery is 10 days. Of course, most residents pay today, tonight, they're like, tomorrow, you can get my house and get this stuff picked up. And we understand that, but our service delivery is 10 days once you have made that payment. And so once you make the payment, we could go into the system and we could see that Tracy Hutchinson made this payment for $150. We need to dispatch it out to get picked up.
Thank you, Chief. Oh, Zach, were you coming up?
No, Mayor, I just want to piggyback on your comment on the picking up things in cans and not in cans. And so although Ms. Hutchinson just kind of laid out, you know, how we notify and such. We have still had a tendency, quite frankly, to continue to pick up the garbage that's not in cans. So we, we can't wait, quite frankly, to work with you on messaging so that we can get to the point where we're not picking it up.
Okay.
I mean, we've continued to do it, but it would be best if we didn't.
Right. It's, I don't think it was clear, so we, we didn't message it, but we'll work on that. All right, Chief Fulham. I want to talk to you about an intergovernmental agreement or an MOU that we signed a few years ago where there were supposed to be vehicles, AMR vehicles, EMS vehicles in Dunwoody. Certainly during business hours, there were supposed to be two extra. I'm not sure we're getting that. I'm confident we're not getting that level of service. And so my first question is, is that a few weeks ago, I heard a rumor that at any given time, we were only two thirds staffed both at fire, you know, fire personnel and AMR ambulances on the road. Is that correct?
That would not be correct. As far as fire rescue is concerned, we haven't had a, a single day where our stations were not staffed, our equipment wasn't staffed. We're very proud of the fact that even through the pandemic, we never had a structural truck go down. Now, what we have had is those rapid response vehicles. In many ways, that became our saving grace, if you will. During the times where we had high levels of of COVID in the department, we would take those units out of service. But the stations have never been, you know, not staffed. So AMR, I can say that they have had staffing issues. There has been times where all of the units that they would want to have on the road were not on the road. I was just looking actually a few minutes ago, I can tell you right now, there's two AMR units sitting in Dunwoody. There's a couple of units that are over at the hospital because I can see that on on a map. But as we've talked about before, you know, once the system starts becoming active, units are moving around constantly. And so, you know, there's not, unless there's no calls happening really to say that there's units sitting, even though there is one at Station 12 now, it seems like it's been here or been there the whole time that we've been in this meeting. The units are going to be moving around, responding to calls, and they're going to find themselves outside of Dunwoody as you see on those reports. And oftentimes, the units that are coming to respond to calls are coming from outside of the Dunwoody.
Right. So one of the problems that we, so we had seen a nice improvement up until 2020. We had seen some improvement, significant improvement in service, and the pandemic happened. And so now we find ourselves worse than we were in a lot of ways. But, you know, we have a, we have a geography. I mean, I know the county is really large, and so there's not necessarily anything unique about that, but we have a geographical challenge because we're pretty far from other parts of DeKalb. You know, and and my friends in Brookhaven are, I mean, they're struggling with some of these same time issues as well, and they have the ambulance, the the emergency vehicle, whatever we called it in Brookhaven. So in this, I'm just going to cut to the chase. So what I have learned over the last year or so on this issue is, is that we started to see a decline in service when it was totally privatized. And places like Chatham County have found pretty significant success in bringing back half the service to be publicly provided. And I thought we were going to see some of that. That was probably pre pandemic, maybe, where we were going to bring in rescue, to CAB rescue vehicles that could do some transporting. And that didn't happen, correct?
Yeah. So and Mayor, let me be very straight about that part because I don't want to make it seem like I was misleading. We do have ambulances that can be staffed by DeKalb County Fire Employees. We call them paramedic onlys. They're not firefighters. What we did, we always had one transport unit in the system. You may recall back in 2019, we did buy additional ambulances. We do have the positions to staff those, but we're being challenged, just like everybody else, with filling those positions. We have 48 positions that I spoke of. They were listed in here. But once again, they're paramedic EMT onlys. They don't have to be firefighters. And our hope is to get to staffing five ambulances that would be operated by DeKalb County Fire Rescue with those paramedic EMT onlys. They would be county employees to augment the service. We do, we're, I believe, we're about halfway full as far as the positions being filled. We continue to hire in order to get those positions, but it's sort of what I talked about again with that, that pool of folks moving around from one agency to the other. The CEO did raise salaries at the beginning of the year. I actually interviewed a paramedic who left us and now is coming back to just this morning. But once again, that's just that sort of rotation of bodies that's occurring. We do have a grant for a paramedic program that we will be creating our own paramedics. And as I talked about, we're going to work with AMR to create more paramedics. But we do, on most days, we have one or two of our own transports that are on the road as well.
So your, but your goal is more.
Our, our goal is to have five transports that are running 24/7. That would be under the fire department's control.
So if the city of Dunwoody were to be willing to supply the vehicle, and council knows nothing, just to be clear, but if the city of Dunwoody were to, I'm not even sure staff totally knows, but if the city of Dunwoody were able to supply the vehicles if we were, because that's what the city of Atlanta is doing. I don't know if you're following all that.
Yes.
But they are rolling out, right? So they're rolling out some of their own, I don't know what you call them.
Their ambulances.
Ambulances through their fire department. We don't have our own fire department. But if we were willing to purchase the vehicles to be stationed at the three stations in Dunwoody, the challenge would still be staffing or would that be a help?
Yes, ma'am. The, the challenge would be staffing. It's, it's going to, to always be staffing, if you will. Is it relates to finding somebody who's prepared, who doesn't have a job today, who's looking for a job to fill that position would always be, always be the challenge. I'm not saying that we can't overcome it, but that would be the challenge is staffing.
So so what I, what we need in Dunwoody is we need a solution, which I'm sure you probably feel strongly, everybody in the county needs a solution. And I don't disagree, but my priority is my community. And so we'll need to begin the dialogue again about what needs to happen. I don't think AMR is necessarily, I don't think they're serving us well, you know, my, but I also understand the barriers. So my husband had a stroke at the end of July of 2020, and I sat because I couldn't go in the ambulance or in the hospital. I sat and watched three AMR vehicles sit there for hours. And I thought AMR was going to be staffing the hospitals. I thought that was one of our last thing. I don't know if anybody else remembers. It was just our last conversation. I thought AMR was going to be putting personnel at the busiest hospitals so that ambulances could get back on the road. Is that happening?
Yes, it's, it's happening at times. They will send their supervisors as well to go to a hospital. And then what basically that supervisor ends up doing is caring for several patients on those stretchers before they're once again released to the hospital. So the patient has to meet the criteria for that patient not to need, you know, extensive care while that one person holds on to them. Something else that's happening, and Dr. Carr could speak to this, but actually, the hospitals have started hiring paramedics just to do that, just to, to take responsibility for the patients when they come in, releasing the ambulance back to service. This is something that happens, you know, way too often. Dr. Carr spoke about the, the text messages. Every time we get to a point where there's no ambulance is available, I receive a text regardless of what time it is. It's not, that's not the major issue. The major issue is that we're at a point where there's a spike in system that we're, we're calling hospitals, getting them to release ambulances. Dr. Carr gets involved as, as well in order for us to get those ambulances released and get them back on the road.
So when, you and I have talked about this before, but when you have outlier calls, when you have calls, I'm sure you heard the description there.
We did.
Does anything happen with that data? Are you looking at it? Are you trying to, what are we doing?
So the first thing we do, and I, I noticed, then excuse me, I forget your name, but he did have a report that we share. That report is where we first analyzed the data and we try to go back all the way to, in the case here in Dunwoody, that the call would have originated with chat com. So we get that report and we trace it all the way back to the time that the unit arrived on scene. We're able to do a few things that are important. One, we can track, trace the response of the ambulance. All of the ambulances, all of our fire units have AVL. So we literally can tell that they take the quickest route or they did the closest unit at the time. We can take a snapshot into what was happening in the system at the time. How busy was the system at the time? How many calls were coming in? So we're analyzing everything because there are times where the system is going to be busy. Every system gets busy at some point. So we're looking to see, did it happen during a spike or did it not? And if it didn't, then what else may have caused that to occur? Yeah. So if I can speak.
Yes, go ahead.
Yeah. So we're going to talk to, once again, I'd like, what is your first name? Malcolm, if I can call you by name, Malcolm. But we'll speak to Malcolm and find out what's going on, what he's seen on the report. We're already prepared to do that when we get done with this meeting to see what may have happened. The time that we show is the time that we get to call and from the time that we get on scene. Right? There is sometimes time that maybe in the chat com that just adds minutes to it, but we'll make sure that it's, it's accurate. Obviously, we, you know, we can see the stamps on the, the CAD reports that tells us what time that unit said they were on scene. And here's the key point, we can match that up to where was the ambulance when they said they were on scene? Were they actually on scene or were they down the street? We can look at it and see where was the ambulance. And so we can get to the, you know, to the bottom and at least know that the times are accurate.
I appreciate that. So when, when AMR came to present to us when DeKalb switched all those years ago, it wasn't for our approval. We don't get to say yes or no. But the question and the concern I have, which remains a concern today, is what happens with salaries? They're a for-profit company. Is AMR competitive salary wise?
AMR, as, as of, I think about a month ago, was the highest paid. And I won't try to speak.
Higher paid than the CAB FIRE?
Well, yes. Yes, yes, the CAB FIRE, as far as a, a paramedic for the CAB FIRE versus a paramedic for AMR. But more importantly, because they, their, their competition is in the corporate.
Right.
So that would be your Grady's, that would be Metro Amlets, those services. I know for a fact AMR was, was at the top of that pay. And there was, you know, significant, significant incentives and bonuses being offered to employees because we hear about that.
Right.
You know, and, and once again, I can say this, and I don't mean to say this in any joking way, but we lost folks to AMR.
I understand, and I'm hearing you. I just felt like I should ask the question. I want to say that we have a situation with a chronically ill child and Dr. Carr, I believe, met with that family and they had nothing but the highest praise for not only what Dr. Carr taught them and taught our local fire teams, but also just, yes. So I want, I want to share my gratitude for that service. And it's, you know, they mentioned that they wish they had had it earlier, so it's a a good thing to do for people. We have to fix this. I mean, not just for Dunwoody, but my priority is Dunwoody. And you have to let us know how. And so we have resources and I'm, what I'm going to ask tonight is that our staff start back where we were. We've got to look at that MOU, which I'm hearing may not have ever been executed on the county side. It's true or not. And we've got to figure out, because we have some geography that makes us unique. Because we have a part of our city that is not served by any ambulance and it's the furthest point in the county. But Sandy Springs is building a fire department next door, like literally a block from the city limits. And maybe there's a way to get an MOU. We'll have to talk about that and what that looks like. Particularly for medical, because I know fire, y'all work together anyway. All right, but this is not the only reason we're here tonight, and that's the challenge for council. So we are here because it's, I forget the gentleman who's in charge of the planning, what his name is, Mr. Brewer. Have other cities gone ahead and approved this? Can you come up and then I'll let y'all answer questions, ask questions if you have any, sorry. Where are you in the process with the other cities?
So I think we have four who have approved their resolutions and we were notified by the other outstanding that they're in process.
Okay. But we don't have to vote on this tonight. We have two weeks to our next meeting.
I mean, I'll say please.
I know you will. So this, just as a reminder to council and the public, we are not negotiating our MOUs or IGAs tonight. That's not what this is. We just have to say that we have a service delivery plan, correct? Okay. All right. Questions for the presenters? Anyone? John?
Thank you. To everybody from DeKalb County, thank you. Thank you for the service. Thank you for the dedication. Your jobs are not easy. You are working for the good of everybody in the county and we appreciate it. So thank you. We start there. The service that we had 13 years ago when we started this great city of Dunwoody was DeKalb County. And you were the gold standard. Nobody would allow us to even think of touching sanitation or fire. You were the gold standard. And that's the standard that we're trying to maintain is looking to you to provide that service. That being said, there's been some ebbs and flows and we're trying to work through the issues. For the sanitation, the staffing issues, you knew of problems. You got lots of emails because we were getting those calls and we're trying to serve our constituents and you're trying to do your job. And thankfully, the county commissioners and the CEO and COO were able to find a contractor to supplement your services in order to provide back that gold level service that you provided. So thank you for everybody involved to doing that. I'm not sure that's happening when it comes to the EMS aspect. I don't see I don't see the services that I'm hearing from um AMR as being adequate. So therefore I then ask, what is the county commissioner, commission doing to supplement those services? I believe that you have raised the tax rate for fire. And I don't know if you have the ability to then, it sounds like we need more ambulances. In our communities closer to home. So I'm looking for you to take a look at how to supplement. What we have because you're lacking. And there've been lots of discussions and you know, how to do it right, but there's two issues. There's the emergency aspect where I need you to save my life. And then there's the transportation that my leg is broken. I'm not going to die, but I'm in a hell of a lot of pain. And I need you to get me to the hospital immediately, please. I'm crying. My leg is broken, but there's no ambulance to get me there. We need solutions and I don't have all the answers. The rapid response sounds like a good plan. Can we get more of those? Can they take people to the ambulance and drop off and have AMR do more staffing at the hospital so that they can, you know. Rapid drop as well as a rapid response. I don't have answers, but I'm looking to the county to provide the services. A couple minor questions on um some of the things that I heard. Sanitation, we are paying a certain amount of money. But that money is also for long-term projection. What is the lifespan of our landfill system right now, if I could?
All right. Um, some of our landfill is the largest as far as like bay cubic yards. We're the largest landfill in the state of Georgia. So you have life greater than fifty years left at the landfill.
Okay. That's also the reason that we are doing so well in the recycling is to make sure that that landfill lasts for fifty-five years, sixty years. So. Please keep doing the great job that you do. So thank you on that. Um, we're talking about the uh recycling. We get regular complaints regarding recycling bins here in the city of Dunwoody. Namely, the one over on Barclay right near Station eighteen. Um. Is there, is that a known problem? Is that something that you handle or is that an outside contractor? That type of collection bin, there only seems to be one main one within the city of Dunwoody. And how do you, DeKalb County handle that issue?
Is that at a, you said at a what location? Is it a residential?
No, it's Brook Run Park. It's right at the back of Brook Run. It's about a half block or so, a couple doors down from Station eighteen.
It's a glass recycling.
Last recycling, there you, oh, it makes it different. All right.
Okay, yeah, the glass recycling. We do have a contractor. You are on a schedule. I don't know what the schedule is. I will need to go back and review that schedule, but. Normally what happens is we pick up the full and we leave it empty.
Right.
So um, but we have found that some of the glass recycling have uh. They've created more trash than they have glass. And so we've had to pull some of them. We've had to actually pull some of the locations.
Yeah, you pulled the fire station one, I think, up, yeah, right.
Yes, because it was turning into a basically a unmanned illegal dump area.
I apologize for that on behalf of the citizens that are leaving that trash, but I would love to have that service maybe a little quicker if there was a way to look at it.
I'll definitely go back and look at it and I will um have Pauline respond back because we do have a driver that is dedicated to servicing those glass recycling containers. And like I said, when we pull the full one, we should leave an empty one.
We enjoy the service. So thank you. I just, it's something that comes up from time to time.
And we use it a lot. We, we seem to, as we, like you said, we're the highest per capita recycling or whatever in the county. And it's reflected in the use of our glass recycling as well.
That you showed us a form where if the, we need special service, we can pay the fee and get our service within twelve days, whatever it was.
Yes.
How does that work when I'm being evicted out of my house and my entire house is now on the front lawn or in the front driveway? What happens next and how does? I don't have the ability to fix that. How do you have the ability? Who pays? Who fills out that form and how is my street cleaned of the trash that is on the curb?
Okay, so great question. We have two type of evictions. You have the marshal. Which is goes to the courts. Those are the marshal evictions, which is the legal evictions. That basically uh the marshal office sent us addresses every throughout the week. We get addresses that basically need to be. Um, these piles need to be picked up. You're right. Could be a three, four bedroom whole house sitting to the curb. By the time we get there, usually it's scattered back to the front door. And so the marshal evictions or what we call priority, those are the grappler trucks as, as, as they go out there and pick up these, these piles. Um, sanitation at currently. Does not get a fee for picking that up, but we are working on that. We're working on that with one of our commissioners, Commissioner. Marita Davis Johnson, we're working on that because when they go fill out the eviction. Form, there's a, you know, fee you should pay for the court. We're working on definitely trying to get sanitation slid in there so we could get that fee. Rec- recruit back for some of the services that we actually provide. Then you have the, I'm the homeowner, you're my tenant, you're not paying, you leave in the middle of the night. I gotta get the house cleaned out. Same thing. You leave everything that you could take in your car. So those evictions are renter evictions, which is called the PayPal's. Those are special collection PayPal's. Someone's got to pay sanitation for that large eyesore pile of junk at the curb. And that's where we get in, we get with code and we'll cite it. Or sometimes um the homeowner will actually come and say, look, I need this pile picked up. So it could go two ways. Usually the complaint comes from the resident that's looking at it.
Yeah, the next door neighbors.
Correct.
Yeah.
That's what a resident usually, so usually all the complaints come from those folks and then we'll dispatch it to code. Sanitation don't have enforcement. We don't enforce anybody to pay.
And as far as the city of Dunwoody, is there any way we could assist in any of that? I mean, I'm not sure we have the ability to levy the fine back or the. The fee back to anybody, but is there anything that the city of Dunwoody could do to assist in that process?
I mean, we could look at that, but right now the code enforcement is who we actually align with. We go directly to code enforcement.
We, yes.
All right. Um, next minor thing, uh, the, talked about the commercial bins. Uh, we have small swim tennis associations really in the heart of the neighborhoods. And um, I'm guessing we've had some problems with those being picked up in a timely fashion and I have had complaints, I think. When you, I think you said they start at five thirty in the morning for those uh commercial bins to be picked up. Uh, is there, is the scheduling of those neighborhood, like picking up at five thirty over on Ashford Dunwoody might be a little bit more. Friendly to that, you know, the mall versus the single family neighborhoods. I've had some complaints. It's been a while. Maybe it's been addressed. I just wanted to make sure if there was any scheduling aspect and how the pickup of the noise of those bins, if it made any sense.
Well, we have two commercial services. We have the commercial hand pickup, what could be like a roll cart that you have at your house, which is our real loader that picks it up.
This is a.
But then you got the big one. All those complaints that we get in, we address those immediately.
Well, thank you.
So we try to address, because we, we understand that people are trying to rest and we dress those immediately.
All right.
If you have any current ones, please contact my office.
Yeah, I will. Um, that's pretty much it for garbage. Thank you for the service again. I'm just, I go back to the beginning of time for the city of Dunwoody and it's the gold level service is really what. We were not going to move away from fire or sanitation. We, we, we expect to look at those. We have the ability, if we ever wanted to, to change our service delivery. On both of those into contract out or start our own fire department. We could do that. But we don't because again, we look at the services being provided and the cost being, you know. Levy to the residents. It's a fair and equitable service and we want to use you. Um, so that's it for myself. I'll, I've, I've asked enough, but thank you very much. I appreciate the service of the fire marshal and the, the uh. The, the, the plan review. Uh, chief, you mentioned a. Dunwoody Village Fire where there was no water at the back of the complex. Is that been fixed? Can we, do we force that complex to get water to the back of the complex for the next fire? Uh, it's those types of things that make me concerned for the residents that live there.
Yes, sir. That, and when I said there was no water, there was some water. It wasn't the volume we needed for what we were experiencing. Uh, at that complex. Uh, so that's why we ended up going out to the street. If you may recall, that was a, a entire building.
Right.
Uh, that burned. Uh, but my understanding, there is low water volume there, but there is water. And that was reported at the time.
And I know you test the water system and you test the hydrants and all of that aspect and those reports, I believe were online or I've seen them in the past where you've done that. So thank you. But again, if there's some aspect, if you were to test and there was not enough water, I'm hoping that we. Together could, you know, rectify any situation with a life safety issue when it comes to water pressure.
Yes, sir. And, and one uh important point there as well is. Just in a very general sense, oftentimes where we do see low water pressure is the private hydrants. Those hydrants that are owned, maintained uh by the, the owner of the property. Uh, so that's an area that uh we definitely know you have your code enforcement correct. That would also get involved in that and our fire marshal works uh very well with them to identify those properties.
And again, I appreciate the service.
Yes, sir. Thank you.
Hey, uh, chief, I'll keep it quick. Uh, this might go with Dr. Carr. Uh, you mentioned your, your nine-one-one algorithm for the nurse navigator. Does chat com do that as well?
No, sir.
Not yet.
Not yet. We, we've, no, sir.
Is that in the books too?
It's up to us to get chat com to do it.
All right. Yeah, I, I, I thought about that. Um, mentioned AMR for salaries, but is, are you looking at total compensation as well for benefits? Is there pension? Is, you know, it's all that work-life balance too? Are, are we also, are they evaluating, are we doing apples to apples comparison, private sector versus come to work for DeKalb County?
Well, just from what I know generally, uh, one area that we are very proud of in government, right, is the benefits that we can offer in those ancillary areas.
Right.
Uh, so I would say that uh what I do know is their salary level. Um, is very competitive in that market of, you know, the corporate.
Yeah, well, of course, this goes without saying, you gotta sell the total package, right? It's not just what's their gross pay or the net, right? So if they go up, you know, oh, by the way, you're missing out all this stuff if you go to private. So um, very well. And um. Uh, Ms. Ms. Hutchinson, do you ever have professional development where you get to go out of DeKalb County for training and see other places?
Yes, we, um, we actually, so I'm proud to say that I think everyone who's staff members are SWANA certified. I mean, so I hold multiple certifications. Um, every one of my staff members are SWANA certified. So you can actually become certified to have a career in garbage.
You're worth your weight in gold. I'll tell you what you should do. I recommend you go to Switzerland.
Okay.
Because, because I live, I live.
Okay, okay.
I'm ready. I haven't had a.
Let me tell you.
Right.
A business trip because, because I lived there for four years. And they have the highest per capita recycling and, and the lowest amount of, it's interesting. Check out their model. I'm just thinking about, you know, just reinventing. How you do things in general.
Absolutely.
It's, I'll, let's go have lunch. I'll tell you all about it. Um, because it's, it's, it's all about the carrot and the stick. And I tell you, I was also in the army and I mandate, you know, I rule followers. But um, those no extra bags, please, please, you know, think about add all those minutes up, right, Commissioner Patrick? Leave the empty bags and then guess what? You're saving time on your crew and guess what? Eventually people change your behavior and put them in, in the uh, the roll cart, right? I have, I have folks on our street that don't have roll carts still. Okay? So um, uh, that was that. And then of course the, the glass, let's reinvent that and multifamily. I'd love to try to address how we can do recycling and multifamily as well, you know? But uh, anyway, thank you all.
Thank you.
Anything? I don't have anything. I just want to say thank you all for your time and I can only imagine the emails that you've received these past two years. So bless you and thank you.
My question is for chief and the question is why AMR? I mean, I've heard a litany of problems and I've heard solutions that aren't moving the needle. So why AMR?
Yes, uh, councilwoman. So in two thousand nineteen, we went through the process of selecting a new ambulance service. Uh, I can tell you this is a very limited uh, uh, field. Uh, we ended up with, I believe. Three services that uh were in the process, competitive process. Um, AMR did uh win that contract and that started in twenty twenty. The mayor stated, we all saw improvements uh starting out in twenty twenty. Uh, and we'd love to get back there. Um, so I, you know. Am definitely working to get back to what we were seeing as that. Uh, traction that we were gaining at the beginning. Of, if you remember and if you recall, those reports were much different than what they are now. And so our goal was to get back there um, to having AMR. Uh, continue to improve the services. The, the nurse navigation was part of their uh, um. Recommendation as part of their bid. Was how to improve the service and we started seeing the improvements there and we just need to get back to that spot.
How long is this contract?
It's a five-year contract.
Oh, thank you.
Hey, one question while you're still up there. What would you say is your target response times for fire and for ambulance? If, you know, conditions were good and everybody was in the right place, what would be a good or a target response time?
Yes, sir. So I, I. I just want to tell you that part of what we did uh back in nineteen, uh, twenty, excuse me, twenty nineteen. Was that we did have a consultant come in and, and really help us refine that. Uh, the previous contract that we had uh had uh two response times. Uh, matrix. It, it was two performance measures. What we have currently in the contract. Uh, goes by priority and, and Dr. Carr spoke a little bit about this. Uh, but our current is a ninety percent percentile. Uh, and I'm going to speak about these. I know that they may not mean something to everybody, but for the priorities, one through three, it's twelve minutes. Uh, at the ninety percentile uh for priority four, it's fifteen minutes and for five through six, it's thirty minutes. And so what we were attempting to do is recognize that one, you don't always want that ambulance, uh, you know, speeding down the road, going to a call that just doesn't necessitate it. And the old contract, once again, it was only two. There was only two levels. Um, so with the EMD. That's a key component of this in that the right questions are being asked, so the right service can be sent with the right priority. And then that's where the response would come in, is how quick they get there.
I appreciate that. Thanks. The only other comment is just, well, echo what my uh fellow member said. Thanks to the county and the staff and Commissioner Patrick for all you do for us. Thank you. Appreciate it.
Tom?
Uh, yeah, thank you. Yeah. I mean. The mayor and John have spoken about the EMS response and I really, the only thing I'd add, obviously that's, that's critical. Uh, but I really don't have anything to, I think they stated it well. The only thing I'd add and I'm, again, I'm probably stating something you're well aware of. And I'm trying, I don't want to oversimplify it, but a fifty-minute wall time just seems like that should be a target area because we can get those. Those paramedics and those vehicles back out onto the street. I think that solves a lot of the response time problems. But again, I'm sure you're well aware of that. I just don't know what the solution is. It seems like. We need to. Get those vehicles out of the hospitals a lot faster. Um, but um. Yeah, so that, again, I don't, I don't. The mayor and John have stated what I would want to say on that. And, and just for Ms. Hutchinson, I just, just want to say thank you. Um, I know the, the sanitation service, um. As John said, has been the gold standard. It's been great. Uh, I think some, I think some of the problems now, you know, are victim of just the, the quality of service that you have provided. Cause people have gotten lazy and gotten used to them picking up whatever you throw out there. So maybe we need to educate our, our public a little better to do that. You know, one of the things, I don't know if this is helpful, um. I, I, I try, if I only got one bag in my bin, I don't roll it up to the week, because I figure again, if they don't have to stop to pick up just one bag, if I can last another week, so maybe. Things like that, that we can do to educate the public to maybe. Free up some of the time of the collection services, but they're great. And I just also please, uh, thank Pauline for me. She's my go-to whenever I have a, an issue with a resident collection service and she is outstanding. She is. Always friendly, always incredibly responsive. So please, please thank her. She does a tremendous job. And, and as, as the whole staff. So thank you.
Thank you. And before we discuss the action item, chief, I want to make one other offer. If there is a legislative solution to the wall time issue, we have lobbyists and we will make that a priority. And I've been talking to your chief's association or our lobbyists are talking to your chief's association to see how we can work together to get some of this stuff solved. So thank you.
Thank you.
All right. So this is an action item for the.
Move to approve.
Move by John.
Second.
Second by Rob. Any further discussion or questions? Seeing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Hearing none, that passes. Thank you. And thank you all for your time. Please speak to Malcolm chief as you walk out the door. Thank you.
And enjoy your time in Switzerland.
Don't want, don't want to, yeah.
Right.
She's gonna have to Google it.
Right.
Um, but thank you so much. Uh, and I just appreciate the candor of our conversation today. And rest assured, we heard every word you said and we're going to lean in on.
Well, we're going to lean in too. Our staff has been instructed to. Prioritize this nine-one-one sanitation. I think we can fix with better communications and enforcing your own rules. And um, and so, but we. And, um, and so, but we got to figure this out. We, we have got to be, we are not going in the right direction. And Commissioner Patrick, would you like to say something briefly?
I would like to say thank you very much for, again, uh, hearing our staff.
Yes.
Uh, but the opportunity to speak to you guys directly is very important, very, uh, very grateful for that. Uh, I will also say that, um, I was impressed with our staff when I first got on with the county. But, uh, tonight's presentation, uh, from both Tracy and, uh, Daryl Fulham is just outstanding. Uh, Decade County is committed to making sure that the services are delivered appropriately, timely, and as expected, we will get there wherever we miss the mark. Uh, with the sanitation component, as all of you have my email address and my telephone.
Right.
You're welcome.
We know.
Continue to let me know if there's anything that's, that missed. Uh, of course, uh, Tracy, uh, gets my emails at any time that you guys send them to me within about five minutes, so. Uh, but we're there for you at the end of the day. Decade County is here to deliver on the services that we've agreed to.
And thank you for, so Commissioner Patrick, thank you for personally serving our one family, our older couple who's supposed to have backdoor service. Who, you sometimes rescue them and that's greatly appreciated.
There's been known for a resident who had a stack of paint cans out in front of his house that, uh, had to get moved on an emergency basis and it was taken care of, so.
That's very kind of you.
I'm here for you as the backstop as well.
Thank you. Good night. And Commissioner Patrick, maybe join that conversation too as you walk out. Thank you. I'm gonna make a recommendation to council that we call this agenda because I don't know about y'all, but I don't do my best work after ten o'clock at night. And so if it's okay, I'm going to recommend that we, I'll need a motion, but you want to do, just make the motion.
Yeah, I move that we defer items eight, fifteen, seventeen, nineteen, and twenty. Eight, uh, so that's Jay's presentation, fifteen, the adoption of the, um, technology policy, seventeen. Michael Starling's presentation, nineteen, front yard tree program, and twenty, the re- revision of the. Of the mission statement.
Madam Mayor, my, it's tech, well, I understand the, the motion. It's technically because more than five people are here, not a deferral. You're essentially tabling those items to the next agenda item. So pointed out for the record.
Move to table to the, to the future.
To a, you, to a future meeting. Specific or you want it not?
To a future meeting.
Uh, the results.
Oh, wait, I go, I think we need a second.
I'll second that.
Okay, go ahead, John.
Um, there was also discussion in public comment that was actually quite troubling when it comes to items number thirteen and fourteen. Um, I don't understand some of the complaints that were issued. Is there any open ethics complaint? There's anything in there that's been filed? I'm trying to understand what's happening on thirteen and fourteen.
Yeah, we're gonna get to those when we get to those items. We're not deferring, I mean, you're welcome to amend the motion if you want, but that was not in the initial recommendation.
I understand that. I'm just trying to see if there's, where we were on those two items.
We're gonna, we'll get to them on the agenda, like we should, unless you want to add them to the agenda, to defer, to, to recommend to table them. I've got to get used to the new language.
Right.
Then we'll get to them after we do the first read and the consent agenda.
All right, I'm, I'm thinking we might want to table them, but I'm, I'm happy to discuss.
I don't want to table them. I want to hear what our legal, our attorney has to say.
That's fine. I'm happy to listen to what the attorney has to say.
Okay, um, a second, any further discussion to?
Quick question on item nineteen, there's nothing timely about expansion.
I think that the amount of money is actually within Eric's purview, because it's ten thousand dollars. So if Richard's department feels like they can handle it, I don't think council needs to be involved in that decision.
It was for discussion. It was just FYI, if y'all are okay with it, it's.
So just, it's within your spending power.
Though, I just wanted to make sure we weren't gonna hold something up.
Right, no, there's no reason for us to even. Okay, we can get a report on it after the fact. Okay, so there's a motion on the table. Anybody else have discussion or questions? Seeing none, all in favor, say aye. Any opposed? All right, so the amendment, the agenda has been amended. Okay, I think, is this Paul? Oh, yeah, he's right here. Sharon has to read it.
Moving to the public hearing item number nine, an ordinance to amend chapter twenty-seven zoning ordinance at the city of Dunwoody code of ordinances. To regulate materials for residential driveways and other purposes.
Good, good evening, Mayor. Good evening, Council. Um, I'm presenting this as a text amendment today. This was before you as an informational item in April. Um, spent through planning commission now and is now before you as part of the regular text amendment process. And I'll, I'll go quickly through, um, the problem we're trying to solve. Um, right now, our code is silent on a drive for materials for single-family properties. Um, there is a section, uh, there's a portion of section twenty-seven dash two oh six. That mentions a paved area, which leads one to assume that the intent initially was that, um, those have to be paved. Because there's a reference to a paved area, but it's nowhere to be found in the code that it actually has to be paved, um. So which, which leads us sort of to be working on, on items like this. And I, I showed these photos before where people, for, for some reason or another, just, uh, put, put gravel into their front yard. And then you have, you know, these, these front yards that look very untypical compared to the neighboring properties. It's not the intent of the city is never trying to be, have these, these green front yards that, that program, the, the front yard tree program. This is the best example with this. Unfortunately, our code enforcement team doesn't have any, um, any, any options to go after these properties. So in other words, you know, but, but the problem is not sort of a, you know, a traditional properly maintained gravel driveway per se. But it is rather someone more or less dumping an amount of gravel on, on the residential property. Pros and cons of gravel driveways, A, so why people are doing this is often because it is relatively cheap. So it's substantially cheaper than a typical concrete driveway. For some of those, there can be a certain aesthetic, you know, there is a certain aesthetic to long winding rural driveways. That, that we don't have this type of lot typically in Dunwoody, but, um, there, there is an argument for, for the aesthetics. Um, from an environmental standpoint, um, gravel has pervious characteristics. So certainly more pervious than, uh, than concrete, but it is especially when it's compacted. Um, it tends to lose, uh, the pervious characteristic. Um, and then especially if it's not regularly maintained and cleaned, it, it tends to lose that. So it's typically by, by other municipalities, it's typically characterized as, as an impervious surface. And then generally, uh, gravel areas need more maintenance than concrete, just because it doesn't last quite as long. Um, if it's not properly maintained, um, then gravel pieces get into the road or get outside of the, the driveway area. And get in other parts of the property, which looks, you know, just not, not neat, um, and can lead to dust control issues, um, also. We, we have examples in the, in the region, uh, for both, um, for municipalities that do allow gravel. Then, uh, but sometimes that comes with specific performance standards, you know, a minimum of depth, uh, curbing around it. So it doesn't, it doesn't leave, uh, the driveway area. And then the majority of the communities do not permit a gravel driveways. Um, for us, uh, certainly from an enforcement standpoint, uh, the, the easier way would be. Because there's, there's such a variety in, in gravel. There can be these really neat, um, like almost engineered contractor-installed gravel driveways. Um, but there can also be, uh, the person who calls up their cousin and, and dumps gravel into their front yards. So from an enforcement standpoint, the easier way would be if we, if we simply, uh, do not allow gravel driveways. We're not seeing a, a whole ton, like to, to be honest, in, in the city of Dunwoody, we don't have these deep lots that would necessarily need that. So we don't see a ton of, um, sort of properly installed gravel driveways. Um, what we would want to do e- either way is, uh, to not accidentally allow other pervious options. Or allow or disallow, um, sort of other, uh, high-quality options. And, and I have examples here. So we put language into the code amendment to continue to allow ribbon driveways. So where you have, uh, two tracks and then grass in the middle, um, grass creeds, uh, which is that second example there. Which is typically more commercial option, but you know, there's no reason why it couldn't be done in a residential setting. Uh, paper options, um, there are porous, pervious concrete solutions that would certainly be applicable as well. So we included language in there. What, what we're asking for is, um, that if they are to be counted as, as pervious areas. That we have an amount of, um, evidence for that, so that they're probably properly installed. Uh, that can be done through spec sheets from the manufacturer or, or the contractor. From a regulatory standpoint, what we're doing here is, is sort of we have two-part solution to this. Number one is that we say, we, we do include that, that material requirement here. We're saying that all driveways and parking areas must be serviced with dust-free, all-weather materials. That is sort of how we're getting to something like asphalt, papers, uh, something that is, you know, when it's, when it's dry, that doesn't change. When it's dry, that doesn't change when it's, when, when it's raining, that, that stays more or less the same. Um, and that's for the areas where cars are driving. So then in addition, we're doing this sort of as a second part to this. Um, we're instituting now a lot coverage maximum in street yards and street yards are both. It's generally your front yard, but for corner lots is what you see down there in the graphic, uh, for, for corner lots, it's also the side yard. So where the corner lot has two street yards, like a regular. Interior lot has one street yard. We are instituting a lot coverage maximum of thirty-five percent. This was in there before, but it was in, in, in a strange section of the code that, where, where people couldn't find it. It said like that the paved area could only be thirty-five percent. We, we think the better way is to put it into the general section for, for the individual district, so it's easier to find for people. And then with, in a sense, broadening it to include all parts of, um, of, of lot coverage. Which in practice is, is exactly the same thing, but it's from a regulatory standpoint, it makes it easier. Because we don't have to go through the discussion that, no, this is the driveway over here and then this patch over here is not the driveway anymore. We can count, uh, same and same and regulated. Um, for lot coverage, as, as a default, we would, we would not allow, um, gravel to be part of. Or gravel, unless it's sort of properly designed, unless we have sort of evidence that it's properly designed. Gravel areas would count towards lot coverage, so it would count towards the thirty-five percent. Um, but if it's properly designed, it would not, under no circumstance could, could cars drive on it though. So we would allow something like, um, a rock garden or like some type of, of landscaping that includes these materials. We would, would continue to allow that. And then again, sort of from, from a regulatory standpoint, um, we included this in the same section it was in before. So, but we're instituting this material requirement now, which, which we think it was intended to be in there. Um, but, but, but it wasn't in there. So we're adding it that, um, this dust-free, all-weather material language. And then sort of other materials may be substituted, uh, subject to the approval by the community development director. And this is sort of to allow these other types of, these other types of, uh, pavement systems. And what we're asking for there is to provide us with a description. Lot coverage, then we're adding, uh, to the definition of lot coverage. We're including, uh, this, this sec- segment that I described earlier, that gravel surfaces, um, that are properly designed. Um, and that are intended to remain largely pervious, would not count towards lot coverage. If someone just dumps gravel over there, that would count towards lot coverage. And then lastly, like to make this all, uh, to tie it all together, we included this. Or the thirty-five percent street yards, lot coverage maximum in each residential zoning district. Uh, that includes our active zoning districts, but because our code and in, you know, we, we have all these inactive zoning districts. That were cluster subdivisions from, from decades ago. So we went into the inactive districts and the appendix of, of our code to, and we added that there as well. To tie it all together and make sure it applies to all residential properties in the city of Dunwoody. That adds complex complexity. That's why, you know, your ordinance is so long with the attachments. But because we went through every single residential zoning district and added this, um, this thirty-five percent measure. To all the districts. Um, and then one last thing I wanted to say, because we received, uh, the message from councilman Secunder. And we received, um, sort of comment from, uh, sustainability committee also. It would be relatively, relatively straightforward from a purely, from a code writing, from administrative standpoint. Um, if we wanted to consider gravel as well, um, then we would create performance standards for, for gravel. You know, a minimum thickness where the gravel has to be contained in, you know, within curbing. And, and we could bring that to the next meeting as well. And with that, um, I thank for your attention.
Okay, um, questions, comments, concerns? Oh, just, I can start at your end. It's a, oh, it's a public hearing. Sorry. Okay, so thank y'all for catching that. All right, unless there's objection, I'll open the public hearing. Seeing none, we will have ten minutes for each side. If you'd like to speak against this code change, uh, please approach. Seeing none, if you'd like to speak for this code change. For it. Introduce yourself, please, and I think you'll need to fill out a card at some point, but just introduce yourself.
I will, I suppose. I'm Nathan Sparks. I am the chair of the Sustainability Committee. Uh, it, I'm for and against this, I think. Uh, I'm not quite sure why we need it. Um, I understand Mr. Leonhart's, uh, point of view that there may be some confusion about the use of aggregate gravel. Um, pee bubbles, I'm not sure what we're really trying to address. But I think the idea, we do want to have more pervious substance, uh, parking, uh, substances in Dunwoody. And, and including our, our parks. Um, we want the ability for rainwater to penetrate. And I think that, um, some of the proposals that, uh, staff has made are reasonable in terms of those pre-planned approaches. Uh, so I think if we do have an issue with a lot of concern, then, then I think the, uh, the proposed changes could help make that more clear. But the term gravel is not clear to a lot of people and I think there's a lot of material that could be acceptable. And it just, it seems to be subject to a lot of, uh, debate. And if we don't need to have regulation, I'm not necessarily for putting it together, so. Uh, but if it is needed, then I think what has been proposed could be amended to, as was stated. Um, add some definition of loose aggregate that is then curved or bordered and professionally performed.
Thank you. Would anyone else like to speak on this issue? Seeing none, unless there's an objection, I close the public hearing and now we can have council discussion. Start Tom down there.
Uh, thank you. Yeah, I just, so, uh, the reason for this, well, there could be a number of reasons, but I know one of them is, is they, uh, we had some complaints about. Um, I'm aware of at least three homes, uh, that were. One poured gravel on their entire front of their property, um, uh, and the, and the two other ones. Covered significant portions of the front of their property with gravel and were parking trucks and commercial vehicles and stuff like that. Uh, and, and there was, so there was ambiguity in the code is, well, is that a parking? Uh, and and there was, so there was ambiguity in the code is, well, is that a parking lot? Is this, is that, what's the lot coverage? Does that count? And so these were stretches of the code i- at best, and so this, I think this clarifies it and and tightens it up. I think it's, I think it's a good, I I I agree with Nathan. Um, having uh pervious options is important, uh but I I do believe that this allows for pervious options, gravel if not maintained, really loses its pervious uh qualities. Um, and in most cases, it's not properly maintained, so um keeping gravel driveways simply for the pervious nature, I don't think is a strong enough argument to keep them. I think there's enough cons. Uh, the dust, the noise, the the sloppiness, the the it, I think it's 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 easier to enforce uh this way, just just outlawing it. So just to clarify, this would with this um in that big polo. Um, so these issues where people have just poured a twenty foot section of gravel next to their driveway and parked vehicles on it, that would no longer be allowed uh with this revision, correct?
So there's two things that would come into there, like number one, people wouldn't be able to drive on there. So this outlaws the use of this as a drive or as a parking area. Number two, that it institutes that thirty five percent requirement, so the N amount of gravel could be used for some purposes, for landscaping, uh for you know, for like a little sitting area, some of those purposes could still continue. Um, it couldn't be used as a as a regular parking area.
Okay, thank you. So I think it addresses the issue that was brought to us effectively, so thank you. That's all I have.
Rob.
Um, so I I I'm I I'm not sure I like this. I I I I think it's fine to address the um the issue of coverage in front yards. We we certainly don't want people converting their whole front yards to parking lots. That that part I'm okay with. I I'm less inclined to be in favor of totally banning gravel drives. I think I would rather see um something in here with performance standards um to allow a homeowner to do that. It just seems like it's maybe just a step too far um for the city and our authority. So those are my two comments on this, and then a question I have is, what kind of feedback did the planning commission have on this proposed change?
Yeah, the planning commission uh debated that a little bit, sort of back and forth, exactly out of that perspective, like like should we, do we need to? And then uh they ended up supporting the the ban for gravel driveways because um that they didn't see the need for it as much, you know, they didn't see that that it was a solution that suited itself for Dunwoody and um that they agreed with the sort of enforcement issues and they agreed with the, that it would make it easier from an administrative standpoint.
All right, I thank you. Yeah, I just, that actually prompts a second question, which is, um, how many gravel driveways are on city property right now?
So we 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 do have gravel driveways uh on on a number of properties, including that the Donaldson Banister House, which has sort of a a residential character, but it's used differently than 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 a typical residence.
Catherine.
I I'm with Rob. I think I think it's good to allow things that if you want things gravel that is to a certain standard, then define the standard. I I don't even read this such that it's outlawed. I mean eligible porous pavement material include, but are not limited to, and it sounds like you can subject to approval, the community development director, um, I don't know, that's what I'm reading on driveway materials, but uh, yes, and certainly I know the mayor's brought this point up too. If we're gonna make it a homeowner rule, it shouldn't be a park exclusion, so uh I think I think we can include a standard.
Um, I'm in favor of the thirty five percent um lot coverage, I think that clears everything up. I just, we discussed this two weeks ago and we discussed like the performance standards, but then the question is how do you enforce that? Are we really gonna send code enforcement out to be like, eh, it's it's only two inches and you need four inches? So I think we have to ask ourselves, like, if we do performance standards, are they enforceable? How can we codify it so it's actually worth something versus just having it and saying, well, we want it to look like this? So, because we did have that discussion last time, and so I'm I I I understand what everybody's saying that, yes, performance standards curved, whatever, so if we can have it if we're gonna do a performance standard, it has to be something like easy, code enforcement who's getting called on it can actually go out and say no, and it needs to look like this, rather of having to two inches and four inches and and whatnot. So that's kind of where I am, like I understand what everybody's saying, but we kind of revisit that and we want to make sure this is enforceable, so how do we do that?
Joe.
So um, we want to make sure we're addressing the root problem, right? It was lot coverage, gravel in the yards. Right, so let's, boom, that's there, right? And now let's set aside the gravel best practices, performance standards. Um, I understand the sustainability committee would be potentially available to provide chime in and feedback on that. There's nothing to say we can't adopt it now and incorporate a change or a or we defer, wait for their refer uh information and EBIT can come back with that as well. But I would be supportive of just doing a little bit more research on defining that and whether it's uh, I don't want to get in the weeds, right, of how does that work? Is it a permit? And they do it beforehand and they come out and they have to pay for their initial fee? I don't know, right? So anyway, I support the performance standards of trying to keep a well-engineered type of gravel surface on a parking, on a driveway. Thank you.
John.
Yeah, I sort of raised this uh along with Tom, I believe, because of, again, there was a number of uh houses that put a whole bunch of gravel down and they were using that as a parking lot on a single family home. The, so we thought, well, let's outlaw gravel. When the definition of gravel, we said you can only park on a paved area. And then code enforcement said, well, gravel is paved. That threw us for a loop. We didn't understand how that worked. Having the thirty five percent lot coverage has always been there. What we are now adding, correct me if I'm wrong, but it's the front yard coverage of thirty five percent. We don't, if I don't care if it's gravel or if it's paved, a thirty five percent front yard coverage solves the issue by itself to a certain extent, because it forces that front yard coverage to be sixty five percent green space for the most part. Nobody can now pave or gravel the front yard because of the thirty five percent yard coverage as far as I'm concerned. So maybe the word gravel, maybe we can allow gravel, but by just the thirty five percent coverage, that solves it by itself. Maybe that's much as my opinion, but I'm happy to hear your opinion.
You know, that that's what we're thinking too, like that's that that's why we just pulled this out separately, because it always wasn't there. We think that's what it was intended to do. And it's the cleaner way is to to write it in as lot coverage, um as a sort of general performance, and that that would exactly accomplish that, that at least sixty five percent of the lot are grass or like
Of the yard, the front yard has, yeah, right.
Yeah.
Thank you. So I'm, as far as I'm concerned, I don't need to be gravel or not gravel, but if the definition of gravel is paved, then therefore the can be a maximum of thirty five percent. That solves the problem for both the sustainability as well as the coverage and the converting of yards into parking lots and illegal and numerous cars, which may or may not be a business, I don't know, but it's it solves, this may by itself solve the issue.
Okay, I think that the goal is to keep people from turning their front yards into parking lots. And let's work with that. And again, we can, I don't think we can say no gravel ever if we have gravel, like we have gravel on some of our roads or sides of our roads, so I think we need to figure that out. But I think, so the goal, I think, is to keep, I mean, I think that's a pretty simplistic goal, but let's I mean, Mike, I think the consensus is let's focus on that. And if you need more time, you can, we can defer in two weeks or table in two weeks, but I know you have to come back because it's a second read. But we can table it if we need more time. Go ahead.
But, okay, so if we're focused on the thirty five percent not turning it, so in two weeks, can this come back in front of us with the changes to having it just the lock coverage?
Yes.
Okay.
Yes.
Is that?
Yes.
I'm just thinking, because then we could actually maybe get something done.
Right.
And then work on.
Yeah, we we can make that happen.
Okay. Yeah, that's fine. That's fine. Yeah, break it up. It's fine.
Okay.
Okay, thank you.
So we
You know what you need to do.
Move to defer to August.
Because it's a first read.
First read, yes, that's right, that's right.
So we were never voting on this tonight. All right, consent agenda. Anybody have questions on the one item?
Move to approve.
Move by John.
Second.
Second by Rob. Any further questions or discussion? Seeing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Number twelve.
Number twelve is a contract award of consulting services for study of police department, Richard Plata.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. So as you recall, we issued a RFP for um consulting services for the study of of the police department in April of this year. We had four responses. We had a committee of four members um evaluate those. We noted down to three that we interviewed. We interviewed that at the end of June, and based on the interview process, we are recommending awarding to the highest scoring firm, Barry Dunn. Their estimated timeframe is eight months at a cost of a hundred and seventeen thousand five hundred dollars. I have the project manager here, Michelle, and I'm gonna probably mispronounce her last name, Weinsel, is the project manager from Barry Dunn. I was gonna give her just a minute or two to introduce herself and her team.
I'm just gonna, I I know it's been a long meeting. I'm just gonna say um I'm with Barry Dunn. We're a national consulting firm. Uh, several hundred employees. Uh, I've been doing this work full time for several years. I've also done work in in uh Georgia uh on a number of occasions. Uh, I'm certainly happy to answer any questions for you, but I think in the interest of time, I'll just, I'll just stop there and just say that we're uh looking forward to working with your community and with your police department, and I'll certainly take any questions if you have any.
Thank you for being here.
Move to approve.
Move by Stacy.
Second.
Any further discussion or questions? It's reminded, this is something we discussed at the retreat. Anybody have any further questions? Seeing none, I call the question. All in favor, say aye. Any opposed? Hearing none, the motion carries. Thank you very much for joining us.
Good night.
We look forward to working with you.
Number thirteen is acceptance of bid of Summit Healthcare Group LLC, the sole sponsor of ITB twenty two dash oh seven for property located at forty five fifty three and forty five fifty five North Shalaford Road, John Gates.
Honorable Mayor and Council. Uh, this agenda item is to accept and approve the bid received from Summit Healthcare Group LLC for the purchase of city-owned property at forty five fifty three and forty five fifty five North Shalaford Road. The city has determined it would serve the public good to sell the city-owned property at forty five fifty three and forty five fifty five North Shalaford Road to ensure transparency and that all public noticing requirements have been followed. On May twenty sixth, twenty twenty two, the city publicly had noticed its intent to sell the properties in the city's official organ for legal advertising. The closing date in time for receipt of responses was clearly indicated as June seventeenth, twenty twenty two at two P M. From the ITB solicitation, we received one responsive and responsible bid. The closing, the sole CO bid response was open in public at City Hall. The Summit Healthcare Group bid is in the amount of seven million, seven hundred and eighty thousand dollars. It is respectfully requested that the city council accept and approve the bid received from Summit Healthcare Group LLC in the amount of seven million, seven hundred and eighty thousand dollars for the purchase of the properties at forty five fifty three and forty five fifty five North Shalaford Road.
Okay. Ken, our attorney. Would you like to give an, oh, is this the time to ask you to give an overview of the history of this property, please?
I'm glad to, and it's also related to fourteen. So uh, and bear with me, because this is very important in light of the comments that were made earlier. The public has a right to know what I can tell them legally versus what I can't tell them that's protected by the privilege. So I want you to uh bear close attention if you can to the details I'm about to give you, so you know. First of all, here is the uh what this is not. This is not a condemnation where people are being removed involuntarily. This is not a condemnation where they're entitled to relocation fees and anything else. This is property owned by the city. When the city bought the property, it bought it subject to a long-term ground lease, which was in effect, I want to say since the seventies, but whatever the date is, I forget, it slips my mind right now. But it was a long-term ground lease where the owner of the ground lease had a right for years to do certain things to improve the property, could sublet it, do whatever. That ground lease expires on November thirtieth of this year. That's very important. November thirtieth of twenty twenty two, whatever the ground le- lessor could have done with the property, they no longer can do it after November thirtieth of twenty twenty two. So I I want to point that distinction, because the city's not coming in and taking somebody's property. We own the property and on December one, we have a right to a vacant building, okay, as a matter of fact, period. The August thirty first date that was thrown around, I want to be very careful about the history, because this is very, very important. First of all, the amendment you're about to approve, if you approve it next, says the closing will take place on the earlier of June first, twenty twenty three, or within ten business days after sellers satisfaction of all conditions, conditions to purchasers obligation to close on the purchase, including but not limited to the condition set forth in eight K. Why is that important? The August thirty fo- first date is being misused in here, as to where did that date come from? First of all, I don't have any relationship with anybody involved in this. The people that spoke tonight, I've never seen them or heard them in my life, to my knowledge. Uh, the law, the legal department, uh outside the legal department, Thomas Mitchell met with uh some of the tenants or at least one of the tenants last week. So the allegations that are being thrown around have nothing to do with us, uh I can assure you. But what's important about that August thirty first date is not how it affects the tenants, and I need to put this caveat. We're not confirming whether or not tenants have a right to be there now or not. Because some of the tenants are probably already month-to-month tenantsies, based on the history of what they signed previously with their ground uh landlord. Having said that, it's not our intention to take the building prior to November thirtieth, twenty twenty two, or December first, excuse me, twenty twenty two. The August thirty first date comes in and it comes in in the amendment, just a second, this way. You'll recall that the purchase agreement, this was done, this has been going on for two years, I think, or a couple of years. Maybe more than two. I wasn't even here until Valentine's Day of this year. So y'all had already entered into a purchase agreement, a first amendment, and I want to say a second amendment by the time I got here. In between the second and third amendment, uh, I was asked by, well, first of all, what were those amendments? Why didn't it close beforehand? Because the financing folks for Summit, their bank, wanted to stop us. A stopples are simply acknowledgements by the people there. Your tendency is gonna come to an end, so that when they buy the facility, they're not buying it with a bunch of claims that there's some right to exist. Almost all the tenants have 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 signed a stopples, including the person who owns the ground lease or the entity that owns the ground lease has signed the a stopples. There's a, there's a few people, some apparently that spoke tonight, who have not signed those a stopples. And I won't get into that, but I will say this. Um, the August thirty first date comes from this, between the second and third amendment. I was asked by Eric, and it might have been after the third amendment. I was asked by Eric to take a look at the history of all this stuff. And I took it a a a look at the history, and I determined, as your city attorney, that one step in the process of selling property had not been made. And that is an advertisement in the legal organ. It had been put out on the state website. It had been put out in magazines, it had been put out all over the place. But in your legal organ, technically, it wasn't there. The statute for selling property by municipality requires it. I told Eric, there was a negotiated third amendment that postponed any closing to August thirty first, twenty twenty two to give us time to comply with no promises that the 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 bid would not, it was automatic to the uh summit at the time. In other words, summit was at risk. In other words, summit was at risk, but if somebody else came in with a higher number during this solicitation, they were gone. That's where August thirty-first comes comes into play because Summit wants to buy it as soon as possible, but they wanted it because of their financing team with the stop letters. There's about two or three. We don't have one from a tenant that hadn't paid rent in over a year or two years. It's being evicted as we speak by the ground lessor. And then there's a couple of holdovers. I I I, so the August thirty-fourth first date, for your purposes, is tied to this uh, provision of the fourth amendment that's the next item. And it says, the purchase price of property shall be seven point seven eight million dollars, provided here if the closing shall not occur only before August thirty-first, twenty-twenty-two. The seller shall provide the purchaser with a twenty-five thousand dollar credit at closing. The purchase price subject to pro-rations and adjustments after described shall be paid by the purchaser sale on the closing date by wire transfer, blah, 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 blah. So they want the property, but they want it with the a stopples. Or they want it vacant. We don't step in technically until December first. So I want to point out, because somebody asked about ethics and and the issue of bribery. Under Georgia law sixteen-ten-two, bribery is this, an offer or gift to corruptly influence. And it depends on the status of the offeree, a public official. So if a real estate agent in settlement and negotiations throws out money or whatever in exchange for getting these a stopples, by definition, they're not a public official. There is no bribery. And I would be very careful with slander laws, the way they are about trying to talk about crimes on a public record. So I won't mention the party that was involved in the discussion, but by definition, they don't meet the definition. It would be y'all taking a bribe in exchange for a vote or acquiescence or omission. Are you seeking, as a public official, or Eric, or somebody in your employ, seeking something in exchange for doing or not doing something? Not somebody that's a middleman negotiating a deal and trying to see what it's gonna take to get a stopples done or get you out. So, uh, it's very important to know that. Again, this is not a condemnation. And so whatever the tenants might try to get now, their time's running out. When November thirtieth occurs, there's nothing to get. If they would have cooperated, they might save the city twenty-five thousand dollars on a credit. But I remind you, getting thirty thousand more than you were under the previous contract that you were already under. And so I'll be glad to try to answer questions. I I want to say, we got to be somewhat cautious because as y'all know, there's certain protections under the Open Meetings Act where y'all have had legal discussions with your team that you can't talk about on the public record. But it's important to know, John, Councilman Henigan, to answer your question. Uh, I have not seen any evidence of anything other than mere allegations. I think it involves with at least a party and and or more trying to get relocation costs, rebuild costs, and everything that they won't get on December first and probably would be an illegal gratuitity anyway. I think there is some room, was some room, I don't, it's running out now for having a discussion about how can we do this in an amicable fashion? That discussion is not illegal under the law, period. And so, uh, it's it's my hope y'all will move on. It's been very, very patient. But they've also given us time to kick everybody out on December first. That's why the closing can get pushed all the way back to June of next year. And that's what we will do on December first with y'all's permission is we'll start moving people out through the legal process. Now, the other thing that was mentioned, and this is, uh, a condition of the purchase amendment, because now they don't want to stop us. They want a free building. They want the bu- building vacant. And what it says when you hear about the sheriff, that's why we got to be careful with words because they can be misconstrued. It says this. It is a, it shall be a condition to purchasers obligation to close on the purchase of the property that one, the existing building, blah, 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 unencumbered by any other rights. In other words, they don't want anybody else making a claim to it. B, seller has full and complete possession of the building, blah, 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 through one, the lawful dispossession of persons or entities occupying any portion, blah, 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 affected by the sheriff pursuant to court order writs of possession and/or the voluntarily voluntary relinquishment by any person or entity occupying any portion, blah, 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 blah. That's in there because that is the process by evicting somebody, is you go get a writ and the sheriff exercises the writ. And so I want to make sure it's clear. Nobody from the legal department is threatening anything. We just simply want to find out, and Thomas Mitchell was trying to find out last week, what is it that you want? Uh, my guess is the agent that was negotiating the deal probably wanted to find out, what's it gonna take for y'all to voluntarily execute some, something that there's probably a, there's an argument, and I won't get into the law, but you may have had a duty to execute anyway. Forget about that. So where we are today is, we should not hold this up if you want the seven-point whatever million dollars. This deal needs to move forward, uh, as is. And I would say Mr. Gates has done a fine job of doing all kinds of stuff. The only reason it was pulled between two and three is the city manager asked me to review it and I reviewed it and there was one ad that was omitted, and it's been done now. And so if you authorize John's, um, request accepted proposal and you authorize the, uh, fourth amendment, you're simply saying, we're continuing the deal, thirty thousand more. If it closes by August thirty-first, they pay the full freight. If it gets moved beyond then, we're giving them a twenty-five thousand dollar credit uh, to close whenever we get things done. But I've read you the provisions of the, uh, purchase agreement. But I I get worried about, I can't tell you what I don't know. That's what I know.
Thank you. Um, I'd like to to make a point here because I think it's important for the public to know the for sale sign in front of that property went up when? In two thousand nineteen, right, Mr. Gates?
Two thousand nineteen.
When we purchased that property, or at least when I purchased that property, it was never my intention for the city to be a landlord. We purchased it for the, you know, we were never going to be landlords. How's that? So, and and the sale shouldn't have come as a surprise to absolutely no one. So with that, these are action items.
Move to approve.
Second by Tom, second by Stacy. Any further question? Uh, any further questions or discussion? Seeing none, I call the question. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Question, Madam.
Oh.
Are you approving, was the motion to approve both items or one at a time?
We vote on things one at a time.
I just wanted to make sure.
So this is for item number thirteen, acceptance of the bid, correct, Tom? All right. So all in fa- all in favor say aye. Aye. Any opposed? Hearing none, that passes unanimously. We move on to item fourteen. Isn't?
Move to approve.
Move by Tom.
Second.
Second by Stacy. All in favor? Oh, any further discussion or questions? Seeing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Hearing none, that motion carries. Thank you, Mr. Gates. Yes, I'm just gonna miss. We don't dialogue from here. Go ahead, Michael.
All right.
Smith, Mr. Smith.
Uh, the next item is the approval of a contract with sole construction for the Delway Road sidewalk presented last time, and I think one of the questions was uh, coordination with Sandy Springs. There's about a three hundred and fifty-foot gap between the city limit and Spalding Drive. Uh, the mayor did reach out to Mayor Paul and facilitated a meeting with the Sandy Springs staff. We met today. They, I I think that they're at some point, they will build their sidewalk. It it won't probably be part of this project. But they did say that they're in the process of updating their sidewalk master plan and that this project that they will be recommending adding it and it will score well based on what they know. So it will get put into their plan and then it'll be a matter of them identifying the funding to go ahead and make that connection. Um, one of the challenges, even if they had the money, I think, is they probably need a few easements on their side to to be able to build it. So that probably couldn't, it would be tough to get that done while we're building ours, but I mean, I think there is a fair, I have a fair amount of confidence that they will complete their their portion at some point.
The mayor seemed like he knew it needed to happen. And I'll ask again if they could just go ahead and ju- jump on ours. Um, although, like you said, if it's too complicated, that might not work. All right. Does anybody have questions from Michael Smith?
Move to approve.
Move by Joe.
All second.
Second by Rob. Any further questions or discussion? Seeing none, I call the question. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Think I'm next, too.
Yes, you are.
All right.
New agenda.
This is a, a request for approval of a contr- uh, contract with Triscapes for our road and stormwater maintenance. Uh, we decided a few months ago that that we needed to make a change in that area. We're having some, uh, some challenges with our current contractor and decided we needed to move in a different direction. So and talking to some of our neighbors, it's it's kind of a, this is a niche, a niche service that not a lot of contractors provide this, you know, kind of ru- routine daily maintenance. Um, and so, and it's a challenging environment right now with the staffing shortages and things and know of at least one city that tried to bid this out earlier this year and didn't feel comfortable with any of the responses they got and ended up just doing an extension with the current vendor they had. Um, so we were looking around at different options and and Triscapes is currently our contractor for parks and right-of-way maintenance, and they also have a contract with City of Milton uh, for their road and stormwater maintenance. And so we looked at that and the scope is is pretty similar and state law allows us to piggyback, so to speak, on another government's, um, as long as they've gone through a competitive procurement process. So we're recommending um, making this change and going to Triscapes effective September fifteenth, when the other contract will end. Uh, we exercised our uh, termination for convenience clause on that contract and that'll be effective September fifteenth. So, and and this will, we're, we're reducing the crew size uh, because we think we can do the maintenance that needs to be done. And then if we have a lot of what we're getting um, now is sidewalk repairs that we can probably do with a contractor that specializes in concrete and get them done more efficiently that way. So we're, we're reducing the crew size and the planning to apply the savings we get to contracting out with some specialty contractors when we need to. So we're reckon, we'll be recommending approval at the next council meeting if if council's okay with this. I'll answer any questions.
Um, questions?
I think it's a great solution. Thank you.
Questions? Anybody consent, everybody? I just have a quick question. Earlier, at some point in the last year or so, Triscapes wasn't able to pick up the lawn mowing for this community development, I believe, if I'm remembering correctly. Can you just confirm that they can do this work before it comes back to consent?
Yes. That you mean that they can staff it?
Yes, that they can staff it. Thank you. Anybody? Is consent okay with everybody? All right, consent. Thank you. Next up are public comments. Does anyone have public comments? Nope. All right, uh, city manager comments.
Uh, yes, Mayor. And Mayor, I want to, I know it's been a lengthy meeting tonight, but I do want to thank you all for your patience and working through the agenda. We got a lot of stuff completed tonight and also want to take this opportunity to thank the staff for all their detailed information, especially the DeKalb County folks that came out tonight and really spent a lot of their time going through those items. Um, having said that, Mayor, we do need a brief executive session for real estate litigation and personnel.
Yes, and counsel, if you have questions on things that we didn't get to tonight and you want to send them emails ahead of time to staff before the next meeting, feel free, like if you have concerns or whatever, feel free to jot them a note since we didn't get to everything tonight. And there was, I think, nodding heads about the front yard tree program. So, um, with that, I need a motion to adjourn to executive session for the three.
Move to adjourn to executive sessions for purposes of legal, real estate, and personnel.
Second. Thank you. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All right, we'll be back. All right, we'll be back. All right, we'll be back.
...